So I think we'll call to order the staff review meeting for the Murray City Planning Commission. It is 6:01 on February 18th, 2021. And let's see, present are, maybe we have two Jake Pearson.
We do.
Yeah, Lisa Makovich, Sue Wilson, Travis Nay, Ned Hacker. Who else is here? Is that everybody?
I think Lisa is sort of here.
Sort of, maybe she's.
There she is.
Okay, and then from staff, we have Smallwood and Jared Hall and Susan Nixon and maybe some others joining us. So first off, we had two meetings worth of minutes to go over. Did everyone have a chance to review those? Anything that you saw, any changes or things you need to?
Two little goofy things.
Okay.
Well, let me find them. First one is in the second set of minutes.
February 4th minute?
February 4th. Yeah, it looks like the first set was good. Is that right? Yes. So February 4th on page two. One, two, three, four, the fifth little paragraph, Jeremy Lowry made a motion and that. So I think the and goes away.
Perfect. That's an easy change.
And the second one was a question. And it's on page six. Yes, I'm wondering, I didn't look back, I could have, should have. For the Cushing, Cushing Woods subdivision, the applicant is Mr. Hall, is that right?
Yeah.
Just happened to be, okay, so that's one little and struck out, otherwise they looked great.
They did look really good. There were a lot of minutes in there.
Thank you.
These are both new sets from Jamie, so we'll let her know if she's doing good. Thanks, guys.
Perfect. Okay, and then findings, oh, sorry, no, conflict of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest at the applications tonight? Right, we will go on to finding the facts. Did everyone have a chance to review those? Any concerns, things you need changed, questions? Three, I thought that they looked really good. Okay. Perfect. All right, then, let's move to our conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit. That, do you have that, right?
Yep. So this is, again, like I'd mentioned in the last meeting, we're getting a couple of these on Hillside Drive, just through some code enforcement cases.
Channel 10 if you want to watch swamp people.
Okay. So it's.
Channel 10 if you want to watch swamp people.
Hey Sue, I think you're off mute. So it's a 0.35 acre site with a 3,200 square foot residence. And they are asking for a 961 square foot ADU, which comes out to approximately, I think, 20, I don't remember what it was, 29%. And it's less than 1,000 square feet that we allow. Let's see, it does have two bedrooms. As you probably have noticed on the site, on the floor plan, there is an office in this one. It doesn't have a closet or anything attached to it, so that's fine by us if it's considered an office area. One thing I do want to bring up in this, and I didn't okay with Jared yet or anything, but I'm just going to bring it up anyway, is the state legislature is looking at accessory dwelling units, internal ADUs, and pretty much stripping, I wouldn't say stripping, they're permitting them in almost all single-family residential across the entire state. So, and one of those things is not allowing cities to regulate the size, number of bedrooms, that kind of stuff. So I think that's going to go through, so looking at that in the future, it's the, we're probably going to come forward with some ADU changes in the next year to follow state law if that gets approved, so.
Zach, I apologize, I missed out, did you say allowing or not?
So yeah, not allowing us to say how many bedrooms they can or cannot have. So, which, I don't know, I'm for it, I'm for that bill, but I just want you guys to be aware of that as it goes forward. So we'll probably have some ADU updates here in the next few months if it passes, so.
And they'll likely be, like Zach said, I don't want that to pass without you making a note as a commission. If what they pass, and it looks like they will, passes, they'll be permitted uses. We won't be reviewing them with you as conditional uses anymore. And it'll be probably retroactive to the beginning of the year. That won't really affect us because we usually approve them, but you probably won't see ADU conditional uses after the state legislature goes into effect.
At least internal ones, external ones maybe.
We'll see, we'll be reviewing everything with you, so.
Are they changing anything about the legality of allowing, you know, requiring a percentage and square footage? Are they just changing the rooms?
They'll be, they'll be not allowing us anymore, probably. If what passes is what's in the version right now, they won't let us any longer regulate how large the ADU is or how much of the main unit it takes up. They'll let us continue to say people that own them or offer them have to live on the property, and they'll let us review the parking and make sure there's parking, and that's about it.
So what about, I know one of the big things like in this case, about it being a temporary rental and Airbnb like that? So would that just be written in, like assuming they would come to the office and let you know they're reviewing the ADU? And then you'd review hard disk and they'd agree?
So they do have, it does allow for the cities to require a residential rental permit, which we do anyway. And it does state in the proposed legislation that it has to be more than 30 days at a time. And I don't know if Jared saw this in the fourth substitute, but they are allowing cities to use the short-term rental websites to regulate. So, you know, for the longest time, the state had said you can't use Airbnb as a tool to regulate short-term rentals. You can't go on there, find the address and use it. But in this, they're saying for ADUs, you can use Airbnb as an enforcement tool. So that's, so it's to really expand housing. But that's neither here nor there, I'm sorry, I got kind of off on a tangent.
We'll brief you on the whole enchilada probably next time. It'll probably be said and done by then, we can let you know what exactly is going to happen.
Yes, definitely. So yeah, as I was mentioning, there is, and you can see that the storage, you can't see it actually, but on the ADU floor plan, the two storage sections are physically separated from the ADU, and it is a genuine ADU space. So it's pretty typical, not a lot, all that different from most ADUs. Do you guys have any questions or anything for me?
It does seem like a couple neighbors have reached out and had questions. Somebody, I think, was kind of confused, like what?
What an accessory dwelling unit is.
Yeah, so it sounds like you kind of answered maybe some of those things in email back.
Yes, yeah, I addressed those in the email, and we did receive an additional email as well after the packet had gone out, so. But yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
There's somebody with a bunch of background noise going on. There's someone with a bunch of background noise, is it possible?
Oh, maybe it's me.
Oh, yep, I think it was you.
Sorry. Thank God, I'm new, I'm new.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question real quick?
Yeah, of course.
About accessory dwelling, I'm not sure how important it is, but still, I'm interested. On the back of the house, in the dwelling of the main floor, it looks like it's a living room? Living room, bedroom without closet, is that, is this above ground, that second living room?
It looked like it was like an addition, and it's part of the same house.
To me, it looks like a porch that they might have, I don't know.
I think, let me. It might have been an addition.
Okay, I mean.
Yeah, I think it's an addition. From the pictures that I'm looking at, it looks like it may be an addition. And you'll get to see those in the.
Because to me, it looks like another rental space, because it's separated by a door, and then a living room and a bedroom, right here after a living room, like is that a rental space or?
That's the main living area, though, that's the main dwelling unit.
Okay, just that's the main living room, and there's a door, oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, that's kind of, that's kind of a stretch. I think they just drew this out as best they could. Yeah, it's not, it's definitely not, I have a feeling it was probably a conversion of a deck into livable space, and that's what had happened there.
Well, I guess, how much does a main living, doesn't really affect, right, them qualifying this?
I guess, as long as it's not part of the rental space, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely not, it's upstairs in the main living area.
Okay, let's move on to our design review, because I'm sure that there's lots to talk about.
Yeah, it's the main event tonight.
Yes.
So the ADU is the nice, easy appetizer, and now I'm giving you the full main course. So this is design review for 184 East Vine Street. You guys would know it as the old Carnegie Library in Murray First Ward. So the, it's a 1.39 acre site. The applicants are proposing 6,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor, as well as 130 residential units across pretty much four, five, five floors, sorry. Because there's, it's a total of seven stories, so there's the commercial ground floor, there's a mezzanine of parking and mechanical and bike storage, things like that. And then there are five floors of residence, residential. This does come out to be about 94 units per acre. The max in the zone is 100 units per acre, so they are just barely under that. A lot of these things, I've been working with these guys for months, probably since June or so. And this has gone through a lot of iterations, so I really, I really want to get into the questions more than probably me just speaking about it. So let's, because I'll speak about it in the public meeting more and stuff. But what questions do you guys have on it? And I'm more than happy to jump to those. No one?
Outside of the two emails, are there any phone calls for public comment?
Yes, so we have received a bit, let's see. Sorry, I'm just getting to that area, yeah, so, cool. We did receive two emails, so the one from Janice Strabell, that she has kind of recanted. So she would like to speak at the meeting tonight, so she's kind of recanted that. I didn't realize it went out in the packet, I apologize, or I wouldn't have allowed her to do so. But she has, she has said that she does not want that to be part of the public record, even though it kind of is now.
So because if she has an email, then she wouldn't be making public comments, is why she kind of is like, I don't want to make.
Yeah, yeah, so she would prefer to make a public comment. That's fine if this is still in here, it's not a big deal. But I want to make sure that that gets addressed. So yeah, there are the two emails we've received, one more that Jared will read into the record later this evening. I haven't received any phone calls about it, though, except from Janice, so.
Do you have other people registered to speak or just her?
Yes, we have, we have quite a number of people registered to speak. But I will caveat that, that the notices went out for that Bullion Street rezone. And so we had to, I don't know how many of those are for the Bullion Street rezone, and how many are, we have 21 registered. So I don't know, the Bullion Street rezone is, has generated a lot more talk than this has, to be honest.
Am I going to be able to do three-minute time on the public comment or no?
That is completely up to.
Which is nodding his head, so, okay, so, three-minute, three-minute timing on the public comment. And I've got the findings of fact ready too, if you want me to, Maren.
That'd be great.
The only question I have is that. Go ahead, Jake.
The only question I have is still in regard to the traffic study, where the traffic study is showing that by adding an apartment, apartments and three commercial buildings, we're going to reduce the traffic somehow.
Yes.
I'm still confused about that, it doesn't make any sense. I read through that entire packet you sent me, 140 pages. I think it's flawed, but it doesn't make sense. You can't add something where there's a fill and reduce the traffic.
And I would, I would push back and say that, you know, just saying that you can, just kind of based on our conversation earlier, and I'll just kind of briefly go over that a little bit. So if, and I apologize Jake, you've heard this already, but I mean to just say it to the commission as well. So doing a mixed-use project allows for people that wouldn't, would have necessarily maybe lived, I don't know, 5,900 South and 7th East. Maybe they just decided, I don't want to live in a single-family residence anymore, I want to live in an apartment, and I'm going to live in downtown Murray. So, and they loved going to Desert Star Theater, they love going to Soy Sushi, they love doing all these fun things that are downtown, in the downtown. And so you, in essence, even you're moving somebody in there, that, and if that person decides to walk or bike, that is removing a trip that would have been made. So, yes.
It's not if their house, their house moved out and is occupied by somebody that also wants to go to Desert.
I have to say real quick, I have to say, I'm not sure that's the strongest argument I've ever heard the planning commission make. I kind of agree with Jake, but my take on traffic studies, I was saying this to my husband earlier, is I think the traffic studies can never say no, because they never have. I think what traffic studies do, I'm learning, is maybe they say, identify where there's a problem, and then address how they're going to decrease the problem. So traffic studies never say there's too much traffic, they only say, oh, we should put a turn lane in, or, oh, we should make the wide road, the road wider, how they're going to address it. So I thought that's what Zach was going to say, there won't be more traffic because you're going to improve the traffic flow by doing this. I don't know.
Yeah, but this study. This study is saying that without doing any changes to the road, we are going to decrease the amount of traffic going through this intersection. But if you look at the table, if you look at the table, it says the traffic will increase, but the, but the actual time spent in the intersection will decrease, which is impossible in my opinion.
That's the main point, is that, is that, yes, traffic may increase, but delay. And that's, and I mentioned to you on the phone that as well, that I don't necessarily like the level of service as a qualifier, because that is only taking into account the amount of time it takes you to get through an intersection. That's all level of service means, and that's all it does. There's another standard called BMT, which stands for Vehicle Miles Traveled, which is much, it's starting to gain a lot more traction in the transportation community. It has a lot of backing there, and I prefer that over LOS, because that, it's just different. So there's that. But also, I will, on Lisa's point, I will make a point here that, and I'm going to make it in the meeting most likely as well, on Highland Drive from 21st South to 27th South, in 2010, had 22,000 cars average per day. And then seven years later, after some multifamily had been built, you know, a lot of the sugar hole area was built up, car trips actually reduced to 11,000 cars per day. And that has steadily, and in the WFRC's traffic projections for 2050, it's still not supposed to go up to over 14,000 cars per day. So it's, mixed use does have an impact on that, and that's why.
There's, I'm sure there's so much more that you can tell us and we'll talk about, I know.
Yes, and I apologize, I just realized.
We're good, I know, I'm sure we'll have a big discussion in the meeting, but I don't want to not review our next two items, so.
Yes.
Skip, I'm sorry, to subdivision Woodward Industrial Park consolidation.
Susan, actually, Susan did the work with the applicants on these and the reporting, but she's unable to be here with us tonight, she's on vacation, so I'm going to try to represent them for her. That first subdivision amendment, they're both subdivision amendments, and they both are to combine lot areas. The first one is simpler, this is in that, it's in the mixed-use zone off of Commerce Street, Commerce Drive, where we have 4680 South that forms kind of a horseshoe with 5th Avenue. It's two properties that need to be combined so that the site can be developed for a new office building that's going to go there. It basically is just a lot combination. It's going to result in an amended plat to get rid of some easements, they're going to record a plat and make this happen. That's the nutshell version of it, if we want to keep moving quickly. You have any questions about that one? There's some power easements that have to stay, but the old water and sewer utility line easements that typically run commercial lots get removed by the plat amendment.
Didn't we just do the temporary office here?
We sure did, that's exactly where this is.
So it's just the next step, right, and then trying to.
Yeah, they just, we don't want to issue a building permit until they record and get rid of the property line that's there that shouldn't be there. So that's really all it does.
Yeah, appreciate the word.
Any questions about that one? No, okay. The. Go ahead, Chairman. You want me to talk about the next one?
Sure, yeah, let's.
Okay. So item seven is a little more complicated, but it essentially results in the same end game. There's a lot in the Crown Point PUD subdivision that backs up to the apartment building that's there, used to be a senior apartments, it's being remodeled into just regular apartments. When that PUD was put in place, there was a fence put around it, the fence was basically put further out from the PUD boundaries. It was a long, long time ago, back in the 80s, doesn't seem that long ago to me, but still, back in the 80s, that fence got put in place. Over the years, the property then was assumed, and she actually, a pool was put in, crossing a couple of property lines. This subdivision amendment is to, the lady that owns that lot has made arrangements with Salt Lake County and with the owners of that property to the west to purchase those properties and make them part of her property and then combine them. And that's essentially what that whole subdivision amendment does. It just puts the boundary where she's had it for, where it's been really kind of assumed for years, and cleans it up and makes it official, and everyone's in agreement, we don't see any zoning problems from those agreements, so it's okay. That's about it, really, is there any other question from the commission about that particular project?
So it just kind of looked like for her to get the number of units, she needs a certain amount of property, and that she thought that she had that, and then lot lines kind of came out and she was short, right, or something?
Well, the other, the other property, she, so in Crown Point, she's just a single-family home. That's the lady that's purchasing the properties, that has the pool, she's just a single-family residence. And the, and the fence was just kind of put in bad, and she wasn't the owner at the time. The fence was put in badly, based on just survey mistake, I suppose. And over the years, it just didn't matter. The other property, we checked this pretty carefully, the multifamily property, we checked the area and said, are they still going to have enough land if they give over this thousand-some-odd square feet to her? Are they still going to have enough property to support the unit count they have, and they do. So we made sure that there's no violation on either side of that fence anymore, even if the change happens.
Okay, great. Any other question? Okay, and then item eight on the agenda was withdrawn, so we will not be addressing that.
And I have a favor to ask Chair Patterson. At the beginning of the meeting, can you just make mention of that at the forefront? So people don't wait until Agenda Item Eight, and we're like, we're done! So that would be very helpful.
We did send comments back by email to folks that emailed in to comment. We replied and let them know that it was being removed, and that there's a neighborhood meeting being set up, et cetera. But there very well could be a lot of folks registered to speak about it that never made contact with us, and I think there's a meeting tonight, so it'd be great, thank you.
Okay, I think let's end our review meeting, and we can take just a two-minute break and be back for our meeting at 6:30. I will call to order this meeting for the Murray City Planning Commission for Thursday, February 18th, 2021. It is now 6:30 PM. Present are Commissioners Jeremy Lowry, Jake Pearson, Sue Wilson, Lisa Makovich, Travis Nay, Ned Hacker, and I myself am the chair, Maren Patterson. From staff with us tonight, we have Jared Hall, Zach Smallwood, and Brian Farnsworth, I think I saw him on. And I just want to make a quick note, really fast before we get into the agenda, that Agenda Item Number Eight for development, general plan and zone map amendment has been withdrawn from our agenda, so anyone that is here for that Agenda Item, that will not be on our meeting tonight. As Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Maren Patterson, have determined that due to infectious disease, COVID-19, novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location, so long as the public had an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's Planning Commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the Planning Commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. So we will start with our first Agenda Item, which is approval of our meeting minutes. We have two meetings, January 21st meeting minutes and February 4th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those? I know we had a couple just minor corrections in the pre-meeting.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Great.
I make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from January 21st, 2021, and February 4th, 2021, with the minor corrections that we reviewed during our pre-meeting.
Great, do I have a second?
Chair, can I second that motion?
Madam Chair, can I second that motion?
Perfect, thank you, Lisa. Um, I have a motion from Mr. Hacker to approve the minutes, and a second from Ms. Milkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Great. That motion passes. Thank you so much. Um, Item Number Two is Conflict of Interest. Do any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the Agenda Items this evening?
No.
No.
No, neither do I. Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our approval of finding of facts. Has everyone had a chance to review? We had three findings, facts, and conclusions for Wynwood Park, Master Muffler, and an accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, sorry. Madam Chair, I want to make a motion to approve the findings of fact to Jacob Ballstet, representing Garbet Homes, for a six-month extension for a conditional use permit for the parking lot at 708 West Wynwood Park Drive. A motion to approve the findings of fact to William Levitt for a conditional use permit to allow construction of an electronic message center sign on the Master Muffler property addressed 6790 South State. And a motion to approve the findings of fact for Joshua and Tiffany Sato for a conditional use permit to allow an accessory dwelling unit on the property address 398 East Hillside Drive.
Thank you, Sue. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, those are approved. We will now move on to our Agenda Item Number Four, with a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit at the property address 352 East Hillside Drive. Is the applicant with us this evening? Great. Okay, we will have a report from staff.
I am off my game tonight, so give me just one second while I get this all prepped. Sorry about that. Okay, can you guys all see my screen now? Perfect. Okay, this, like you said, Agenda Item Number Four, Ruth Myers is requesting a conditional use permit approval for an accessory dwelling unit at 352 East Hillside Drive. It's located on, obviously, Hillside Drive. On 352 East, so you have the junior high kind of to the east here. You can see on this vicinity map, it's kind of northwest. I got my directions wrong, so northwest is the junior high. Wow. Uh, it's in the R18 zone, which is a single-family zone, accessory dwelling units are allowed, subject to obtaining a conditional use permit. The applicant did provide a floor plan and site plan. This is the proposed site plan, there's an existing walkout basement, which will serve as the entrance to the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, let me back up just a little bit, the, the main dwelling is 3,270 square feet, according to the assessor's website, and she is proposing a 961-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. That's about 29% of the total square footage, which is less than the 40% that we allow, and also the 961 is less than the 1,000 square feet that we allow. I believe she is proposing to extend her driveway. There's plenty of parking already, there's a two-car garage, and then this is a very deep driveway. Uh, but she is proposing to expand her driveway an additional eight feet to provide additional parking. So this is the main floor of the, the dwelling. It's not really relevant here, but this is more just for your information. Sometimes we get these, sometimes we don't, I apologize, my nose is running. So I don't want that to do that all over the camera, because that would be cute. The, this is the, the floor plan for the accessory dwelling unit. Um, as you can see, there's a living area and kitchen. The kitchen does connect to the main dwelling through this door here. It does have two bedrooms and an office space. The two bedrooms are allowed. Because this office doesn't have a closet or anything attached to it, we are okay with that as, as just additional living space. So that total area equates to approximately 961 square feet. This is a pretty typical application. Here's a couple photos. Commissioner Milkovich, I think you mentioned in the pre-meeting, you can kind of tell this white space here looks like it was an addition. If you look over on this left-hand side, you can see where the brick house kind of ends, and you can see where that white addition kind of is added on. Maybe, if you can, I don't know, but, um, so we are recommending approval of this accessory dwelling unit, subject to the typical 13 conditions that almost all of our accessory dwelling units have. Uh, any questions I can answer at this time?
Okay. Um, would the applicant raise their hand?
Yes.
I'm here.
Perfect. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Ruth Myers, and my address is 352 East Hillside Drive in 384107.
For being with us tonight. And we had those conditions on the screen, conditions of approval, were you able to review those?
Yes.
And will you be able to comply?
Yes.
Great. Is there any additional information you would like to give us regarding your application?
I think that Zachary was very thorough, so I don't really have anything to add.
Okay, perfect. Um, Ben, we will, I'll now open this meeting for public comment regarding this item. So if you would like to make a comment on this Agenda Item by emailing the PlanningCommission@murray.utah.gov, or if you're participating in the meeting through the Zoom webinar registration, and you wish to make a live comment, please click the raise hand button. If you are making a live comment, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you have submitted an email comment previous to the meeting, it will now be read into the record, and we ask you to not make any additional live comments in the meeting. Um, did we receive any, I know that we had some emails in the packet, have we gotten any additional email comment?
There is one more email that is in the file already to be read that was received on Monday, the 15th, after the packet went out. So I can read that in if that's all right at this point. Okay, the email is from Jamie Christensen, or Christensen, regarding the request at 352 East Hillside. It says, Dear Murray City Planning Commission, this email is my response to the conditional use permit request to construct or operate an ADU at the property address 352 East Hillside Drive. I am against the approval of this ADU permit. We are surrounded by development of low-income housing, high-density housing, and multi-use development projects. Gone are the days of affordable single-family unit subdivisions in Murray. Most single-family housing and construction today is upwards of 750,000 to 1 million minimum. By allowing this property owner to construct and operate an ADU, the property will most likely never be turned back into a single-family home. I fear for the degradation of our subdivision by setting a precedence of converting our homes into more rentals. It is bad enough that owners are renting out their entire homes, which often are unkept, lack structural upgrades, create parking issues with increased numbers of residents, and lack owner accountability for the occupants of their dwelling. I do not want to add to these existing conditions with approval of this permit. The original builders of our subdivision intended for families to purchase their own property at an affordable price and create a safe neighborhood with homeowners investing in and improving their property as a long-term commitment. I believe that the intent of this owner is not for the betterment of our neighborhood, but for personal profit and gain. I request that you help us maintain the integrity of our neighborhood and not approve this ADU permit to go forward. Thank you for allowing me to express my concerns in this matter. Sincerely, Jamie Christensen, 336 C Saunders Street. And I'm just checking email to see if we have any others regarding this project, and it does not look like we do.
Any other comments, Zach, from? No? Okay. Um, I think then we can close the public comment portion for this Agenda Item. Is there anything you want to address? About?
Um, so typically, we require, you know, a, a lot of these are owner-occupied. We, we require that as a condition of approval, as one of those 13 conditions, so, um, unfortunately, I can't help when somebody rents out their entire, their entire home or whatever, that's, that's their right as a property owner. But as an accessory dwelling unit, this does help, because the, the property owner is on-site and is able to address concerns and anything at that time. I think that's, I think that was kind of one of the main concerns, is, is just the, the rent, rentability of, of, of that, so.
Yeah, and, and like you said, it's in the conditions, and so if those conditions aren't being met, then yeah. Did you have a commentary?
I was just actually curious if either Zach or Jared would maybe give an update from House Bill 82, since we're talking about this issue, it's pertinent to the conversation, and just that way it's out there for the public to hear that it is something coming forward possibly.
Sure, I can, I can speak to it a little bit, I've been following it pretty, pretty closely. So there is a, it's House Bill 82 in the state, in the Utah State Legislature. Right now, it's being discussed to allow for internal accessory dwelling units across the entire state regardless of city regulations, some city regulations. Some of the proposals are that it does be owner-occupied, and that it be rented for more than 30 days at a time. And it will allow, however, it does restrict cities from placing a limit on the size, the number of bedrooms, and limits the additional parking to an additional one space per, per accessory dwelling unit. I think I covered the main topics there. And, and that's mostly it, so if you, if you feel strongly about it one way or another, I suggest reaching out to your state elected officials, your state representative, your state senators, and, and let your voice be heard on that, so.
Great. Any other?
Thanks.
Comment? Okay, I will close, very close, the public comment portion, maybe. Um, if there's no, if there's any further discussion, or I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and/or operation of accessory dwelling unit at the property address 352 East Hillside Drive, subject to Conditions 1 through 13, as discussed.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Milkovich, and a second from Commissioner Pearson to approve the conditional use permit to allow the construction and/or operation of the accessory dwelling unit at the property address 352 East Hillside Drive, with the, subject to the 13 conditions. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, great, then I will call for a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes, congratulations, and good luck with your accessory dwelling unit. Okay.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Sorry, can I, I'm getting a number of emails coming in for the Bullion Street rezon application that's been removed from the agenda. Would you mind making the announcement again, so, just for the people that are tuning in?
Of course.
Thank you.
On our Agenda, Agenda Item Number Five, which was a General Plan Amendment and Zone Map Amendment for Hamlet Development, that Agenda, what did I say?
Agenda Item Eight and Nine, not Five, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. We're on Number Five, we're talking about Agenda Item Number Eight. Um, that was, um, yes, for the Bullion Street review. That Agenda Item was removed, withdrawn from our agenda on February 11th, so that will not be part of our agenda or meeting this evening, so.
Thank you.
Anyone wanting to speak to that or talk about that, and that will be on a different meeting, and when they reapply, reminds me that those notices will go out again.
Will re-notice it again.
When that item will be coming to the Planning Commission, so we apologize if anyone was here for Agenda Item Number Eight for Bullion Street, but that has been withdrawn from our agenda this evening, so we will not be discussing that tonight. So we will move on then to Agenda Item Number Five, which is what we are on right now. Um, Joe Johnson and Sync Development requesting a design review to allow a mixed-use building to be located at the property address 184 East Vine Street. Um, is the applicant with us tonight?
Yeah, that, that, the, the two applicants, and then also the architecture group is on as well.
Okay, awesome. So we will have a report by Zach Smallwood.
Thank you so much, Chair, I appreciate that. And I'm a little bit on, more on my game now. So. Okay, so this is a request from Sync Development, as you'd mentioned, for a design review approval for a mixed-use project at 184 East Vine Street. It used to be the location of the Murray First Ward and Carnegie Library. Those were demolished in 2020, and so this is a proposal coming forward to replace those. It is in the MCCD zone. That zone is Murray's downtown core zone, where we envisioned the heart of the city to be completely, you know, downtown-oriented type of projects there. The, the zoning allows for increased heights, increased densities, because we expect this to be a mixed-use, walkable area. So we'll jump right in to, I, I'm gonna go about this in the, and I'm kind of, gonna jump around a little bit, so if something doesn't make sense, or if I jumped in a totally wonky way, please interrupt me with any questions, anything you'd like. I can, I can definitely take those on the, in the moment. So this is the proposed site plan. As you can see, Vine Street is at the top of your, at the top of your screen. Arlington Avenue is at the bottom, and then the, the project takes pretty much the entire width of, of Vine Street. There is, a fire did request that a emergency services pull-out be installed as part of the design review, the, uh, Design Review Committee, that the, there's a MCCD Design Review Committee that makes a recommendation to the Planning Commission for this. And that was one of the stipulations, was making sure that there is adequate emergency access there. So this pull-out will be, and you can see it here, striped, no parking at any time, or like a 15-minute loading, unloading zone, as well as this pull-in here that is also going to be used for deliveries and, and, and the like. Need to move a couple windows, I have too many open. So I'll go over some of the parking, because that's, that's really kind of interesting in this, in this site. So, the required parking is 100 and, I apologize, now I don't remember, and I'm questioning myself. All right, so we have, the MCCD zone does have a minimum parking requirement and a maximum parking requirement. So you, there's a, a, a window in which you are allowed to park your, your, your project. So total vehicular parking is required at a hundred and forty spaces, uh, minimum, uh, and a maximum of a hundred and eighty-one. Now, there is, uh, so they, they kind of got close here, um, in their parking calculations. And, and as you can see, I'll, I'll talk about this a little bit. Parking, uh, bicycle parking is required in MCCD projects. So, uh, the minimum required is seven for this project, seven bicycle spaces. However, the MCCD zone does allow that for, at one for every, you're allowed to reduce your, your parking requirement by one for every five extra bike spaces for a total of a, I believe that's a twelve, space max reduction. So they are proposing to reduce that by ten by providing, uh, somewhere in the ballpark of sixty bicycle spaces, um, that are completely off-street and are, are stored on the mezzanine level. And so that would reduce their parking by ten. Um, so their new total is a minimum of a hundred and thirty spaces and a max, uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't reduce their max, so they're still allowed a hundred and eighty-one, um, max spaces. So, um, I guess that is all explained right here on this table as well. Um, it's kind of hard to read, but I explained it a little bit. So we will go on to the ground floor. So ground floor commercial is required in all mixed-use projects in, in the MCCD zone. Um, it is to be, um, the entire frontage, um, it, with a depth of forty feet. That comes out to approximately, uh, six thousand forty-nine square feet. Is what they provided. And they are required to have six thousand forty, so they're about nine square feet over, which is good. We like additional commercial space. So that's located here in the front. There's three kind of pad sites there. They are allowed this lobby area. And also this is all ground, this is all parking here with a ramp that goes to the mezzanine level. So this is the mezzanine level that, uh, here are those sixty, uh, bike storage area that results in that parking, uh, reduction. This is additional, um, lobby space, uh, for, for, for the development. And this is just, these are open to below, uh, as it states, and then this is used for the spa equipment and utilities. So then we'll get up onto the third floor. Um, this is the first floor of the residential area. So you can see that, uh, they have the amenity deck here, which does go, um, is, is considered part of the amenity space or open space. We do allow that as part of that calculation. So I'm gonna jump into that a little bit and, and talk about that for just a moment. So as you can see here, the open spaces, um, are pretty much the, the street frontage, and then there's some, there's some spaces kind of sporadically placed throughout, but a large portion of it is used as this podium, area. And, um, here on your right, you can see, um, barbecue pits, and pergolas, planters, um, those kinds of things here on, on your slides. So then, uh, roughly floors four through seven, pretty much follow the same way. The, the bedrooms are laid out a little bit differently in, in, on, on some of them. But for the most part, the, this is what floors four through seven look like. So I wanted to get into, uh, materiality here. Um, this is my one dig at, at the, at the applicants is that they, um, rendering doesn't show the true look of the building. So I've, I've done things some, a, a little bit different. Um, uh, it, I, I'm showing the elevations here, and they have turned on a, a, a setting in, in the architecture software that kind of allows for this shade to the side, as you can see. Um, and you can kind of see, so it, it's, it's trying to show shading from the sun on, on these elevations. So as you can see, these look a little bit warmer than, say, this, this elevation because this is getting full direct sunlight. Um, so what I did is I took these little samples of what the materiality looks like, and then I zoomed in on each of these, uh, these little sections. So this shows, this is the ground floor, uh, one of the commercial spaces. So you can see it's a mix of brick lined up here with this black metal paneling, which be used for signage and kind of a banding across the top. And, uh, the wood look fiber cement planks, you can see right up here. Additionally, uh, another one, this is kind of the, the middle, uh, commercial space. I wanted to include one that showed the, the stone paneling as well. So you'll see stone paneling here with some signage. This obviously is not the signage that's going to be there, but it, it would be, changed as it goes through. And then you can see the addition of the brickwork that's on the ground floor there as well. Then I also took, um, one up closer. These are the, the top four floors. So you can see there's a mix of, of stone here with a mix of stucco, brickwork, and also that wood cement pan, or that wood paneling. I didn't include it on, I didn't include it on this. I apologize. But there's also some stucco included as well. So with that in mind, you, you can kind of see these in a, a little bit different light because they're, they're a little bit more zoomed in. From far away, all you really see are just grays, a wash of gray. Um, but when you actually get in there, you can kind of see the materiality. So, you know, this is that stone. Um, this is going to be more of your, um, stucco area, but there is quite a mix of materials in, in this building. So I will move on to, um, the public improvements on Vine Street. Uh, this is going to be a very large improvement over, uh, the pedestrian realm that's there currently. Uh, we are, they are required to dedicate a, a minimum of twelve feet for, um, sidewalk and, um, uh, it's not park strip, it's more of, um, furnishing zone. So there's benches, there's light posts, there's bicycle parking, um, trash receptacles. Um, it's going to mimic, uh, similar. And I didn't put it on there. It's in your packet. Um, the, the photo of, um, what's on Vine currently near the Home Two Suites. So there, there will be trees. Um, it's not going to be just gray like this. This is just kind of illustrative of what, what kind of furnishings are gonna be there. So you're gonna have, um, a five-foot furnishing zone with a seven-foot sidewalk, which I think right now there's a four, a three or four-foot sidewalk in that location right now. And I think it's just curb adjacent. Also, we, uh, or the, the MCCD DRC asked for improvements to be placed on Arlington Avenue, um, and they, the applicants have, uh, are proposing to install those. Um, right here, you can't see it. You'll see it on the landscape plan, but there are the addition of trees and plantings and stuff, so it's not just squiggly rocks. Also, another thing that was brought up. Go ahead.
Zach, can I stop you real fast? Just, can you go back? Can you show me where the bicycle parking is supposed to be? I don't see it called out in any of the, in any of the numbers there.
Like, so the bicycle parking is right there. There, there's four little.
Okay, okay, okay. That's perfect. That's, that's all I needed to say. Thanks.
Perfect. Yep. And so that's just, that's just bicycle parking that most likely wouldn't be used by residents because they have that additional level of parking that they can use. So also, the, uh, Murray City Center District Design Review Committee, um, suggested, you know, putting, uh, some sort of monument to the buildings that were there before, the Carnegie Library, as well as the, um, the Murray First Ward. And, uh, they agreed, the applicants agreed that, you know, something should be there. They're, they aren't able to turn around, whoop, turn it around as quickly, um, on what that exactly looks like, but they are kind of showing a monument inspiration. And to look, you know, kind of come down and see the building, this will be here. And as you'll see on the landscape plan, there's the plan for some trees and, um, some stuff there as well. So with that, we'll get into kind of the landscape plan. I apologize, this is kind of blurry. But that's what I had. And I meant, I think I made mention in the staff report that it needs to be updated. I did get an updated version of that, um, about ten minutes before we were supposed to go live. So, um, I wasn't able to update these slides to, to reflect that. But we do have one that does address, uh, that pullout space now, um, and the monument area. So as you can see, street trees, uh, the, at the Murray City, the DRC recommended that they follow the same tree type, the tree species that's used, um, on the Home Two Suite site, which is a, a honey locust. It's a really great street tree. It does really, does really well, like, in street areas. So it's a really strong tree. Um, some other site and other trees that are just spread sporadically, uh, throughout the, throughout the site. There's a couple of trees here, um, on the south side, and then one up in the north, like I had mentioned. Also, another honey locust up here, down here in Arlington. So I, I've kind of just talked for a long time, so I, I want to get into questions and, um, comments. So we are recommending that, uh, the planning commission, uh, approve the application for design review for the proposed mixed-use building located at the property addressed one eighty-four East Vine Street, uh, subject to the eight conditions that are in front of you. So. There's that.
Hey, Zach, is there a requirement for any street signs that will direct people to park behind the building? So if I'm coming to, uh, one of those businesses, I probably won't know that there's parking in the back. Is that something the city would do or the property owner? Can we stipulate that?
Uh, the property owner would probably do that. We wouldn't require, um, anything like that because they, they could use on-street parking to patronize that if they wanted. But it, I believe that, uh, the project owners will probably place that, you, you know, some sort of signage that says there's parking in the rear because I'm sure their client, they're, that, the people that are renting the space will probably want that signed. But there's not really a, there's not something that we would require there.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Zach, can I, can I ask another question?
By all means.
I'm gonna start us off like, because I know there'll be some more serious questions that come. So, um, I feel like I have some real-life experiences on this topic. I raced bicycles for about almost fifteen years and gave bike clinics and did women's bike clinics. And, and I know tons of cyclists. I have several bikes still, even though I'm not racing. And, um, so I know hundreds of people who ride seriously. And I raced bikes for a while. I raced on the track for a while. And, um, out of the hundreds of people I know, one doesn't own a car. He's in his fifties and still gets everywhere on his bike and doesn't own a car. There's a second I know that doesn't own a car, but he's in college and he's twenty. I don't think that's gonna last very long. It's just a financial situation. Um, I say that because I know there's probably national agreement and a lot of smart people did research to support the numbers of how many bikes should reduce the number of parking spots, but it just seems like fifty bike racks aren't really gonna reduce it by ten cars. All those cyclists will still own cars. I, I just wanted to say that. I'm sure you're gonna say it's a national standard, right? Talk to me about it.
I, I'm not gonna say that it's a national standard. Um, it's Murray standard. Um, and, and so that's what we had, that, that's what's in the code anyway. And, and I know at the time, and that wasn't changed, uh, during our recent rewrite or anything like that. Most of this code, I think, was developed with, with good intentions, with good downtown principles. Um, so, uh, that's all I can, can really say to it. Is that, that's the, the intent is, and, and it's not going to immediately, you know, pay off the day it opens, but the more intense, the, the more development comes.
I, I support the sentiment, and I agree. I, I would prefer people, myself, to ride a bike than a car, but think realistically, it might not pan out, at least not for several years. Yeah, there you go. That's all.
Yeah, that's, that.
Traffic, anyone?
I'll, I'll, I'll speak to traffic. I, I think that, um, Zach, I know you're sick of listening to me say this, but I think that the, the parking and the traffic are the two biggest issues with this, with this project. And I know that, uh, you know, I know what the zone says, but I think we're gonna have parking issues. I think that's going to create issues with those businesses, not having people want to go there because of the parking issues. And so, and I, and I disagree with the park, the, the traffic study that says we're going to reduce the amount of traffic by putting more people on that road. But I under, I under, I understand that there's a study. I understand, you can, you can speak to it if you'd like, but, but those are my concerns.
And, you know, I, I talked to Jared briefly in that two-minute break that we had from six twenty-seven to six thirty. Um, that, you, you know, and I, I should have made this clear. I, I'm making the, the, the point. We kind of talked about it a little bit, uh, in, in brief, but level of service only looks at time it takes between to get through an intersection. So that doesn't mean that it's going to have less traffic. It just means that you're not going to spend as less time to get through that light or get through that.
But how do we reduce the amount of time people are getting through the light by doing no changes? Because according to the study, by no changes and building the project today, it's going to reduce the amount of traffic going through that intersection, which is impossible, in my opinion.
And that I can't speak to. Um, I, I'm not, maybe Jared can speak to it. I don't know. But I, I, I don't know, to be honest with you. I, I, the, the traffic impact study, um, they use very complex models and and, and they kind of work themselves out. And that's kind of.
Well, it's, I, I can speak to it a little bit because they're, they're gonna have access to data that, that shows them traffic modeling for, for twenty twenty-five as well. So some of that's based on things that are gonna develop in the, in the coming years too.
But Jared, sorry to. Jared, can I interrupt real quick?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. The, the chart is showing twenty twenty with the project and without the project, not, not five years down the road.
Yeah.
And it's saying that with the project, it's going to reduce the amount of traffic or the time they're spent at the light with no changes. That's not with the, that's not with the changes that they're proposing.
But Jake, I, I would somewhat traditionally and currently to agree with you a little bit, but I'm playing devil's advocate. Having said, I'm on your team, but don't, don't they, in the report, discuss converting the existing right turn lane and bike lane and something about a charo? What's a charo?
Charos.
They, they do, but if you look at this chart on the executive summary, it has level of service and it has fi- five columns. Column one says existing twenty twenty back background. That's what Zach explained to me. That's what it is right now. The next column is mitigating existing background. That would be with the lane changes. So I understand how that would reduce it. The next column is existing plus project, meaning no lane. The next column is existing plus project, meaning no lane changes, just building the project. Am I explaining, am I not saying that right, Zach?
I'll have to double check on it to make sure, but that's my understanding. Yes, is that it's the same?
Column one is 2020 right now. Column three is 2020 right now with the project, no lane changes. And somehow that's reducing the amount of time people are spending at the intersection.
Commissioner Pearson, I know that the applicant is here and that they have, you know, got this traffic study. And so, you know, maybe when we talk to them, that would be something that we could talk about more.
Well, I've, I've said my, my piece, so I'll try to not say much.
They might have maybe a clear explanation about how they got to, how that the traffic engineers got to some of those numbers, maybe, so.
Sure, thank you.
Mayor?
Well, and I think it's.
Sorry, go ahead Travis.
I was just. Reviewed the traffic study?
Yes, yes, he has.
Okay, so, I mean, you know, clearly I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't claim to be a class, a traffic engineer, but what I do rely on heavily is the city engineer. And if the city engineer doesn't recommend mitigating factors based off of what the traffic study says, I tend to go with what the city engineer has to say on the subject, simply because they are the professional engineer. They review these traffic studies on a regular basis. I, I agree with you, Jake. There's some fuzzy math maybe in there, but the fact that Trey Stokes didn't come back and recommend a bunch of changes, I, I, I feel okay with that because in years of seeing traffic studies and, and understanding his review of the process, if he's comfortable, I think it's safe that, that we can be reasonably comfortable. It's not perfect, you know, it is, I think there is some science that's above my head. There's a lot of science above my head, but the traffic studies in particular, they tend to be above my head. But, but I do put a lot of faith in, in what the city engineer says in this, in this subject, just so you know.
Madam Chair, can I try, I would like to make one more comment to try to clear up my perspective on it, if that's okay? I don't know if I'm going to. I might make, I might muddle it more, but I just want to record the show that I live in this neighborhood and I'm also worried about the increased traffic in the neighborhood. And I, I'm also, I, I do not have a degree in traffic engineering, so I have to rely on those who do. Having said that, I often find the reports make me scratch my head and think, hell, is that going to work? And I've also come to the realization that the reports, I don't think we can ever tell people we can't grow. That's just, growth is inevitable. So I think the reports usually coming back are, they're focused on how can we grow? And how can we mitigate things and make it work instead of saying, no, it'll be too much traffic? So that's where we stand, I think.
And just personally experienced at this intersection a lot.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Lowry.
Okay, I, you know, traffic patterns are going to change if this, you know, with this, with this project regardless. My bigger concern is there's 130 residential units. And to Commissioner Milkovich's point, there's 120 parking stalls. I, I would encourage the developer to readjust and assign at least one parking stall per, per residential unit.
And I think, I, I believe there is. I think there's 137 total.
There's, that's, that's, that's including the fuzzy bicycle math. There's 120 actual stalls and 130.
Okay, yes.
And I, and I like bikes. I own, I have a bunch of kids and I think I, it feels like I have two or three for each kid, so, but I still, you know, need parking stalls for my car.
Any other thoughts or force staff?
Madam Chair, can I just throw one more thought out there, just so we have it for the record and the public knows we're thinking about it? We are all thinking about the schools as well and what this will do for the populations in the schools in that area. I think the schools, you know, I wring my hands too, they're kind of a little bit like traffic studies. We can't tell others that we're not going to grow. We just have to make sure our school district's involved in growing as fast as they can to keep up with the demand. So just with that on the record, we're also considering the schools trying to.
Yeah, thank you. I know that was kind of included in one of the email comments of the question.
You know, I, can I just throw in one more thing? In reading this report, it is recommended that they go to the maximum parking places, spaces, which I believe is 163. It says they strongly recommend that they do that. I'll find that again. But I'm just worried that it's going to be severely underparked. Oh, it's under parking regulations. I just, I just worry with 130 units, even by, you know, our own city definition, I think we've got to have at least one parking place per unit. And if, if there's going to be two bedroom units, then I think we're unrealistic to not have, allow two parking places for those. Because I think we live in a mobile society. We're, we're a car culture. You know, we're not at the point yet where we walk as much as we probably should. Really like their cars. They like to own a car. And it's great, you know, for the bicyclers and stuff and I, and I applaud that. But we need to, you know, if there's going to be 130 units, we need to be able to park 130 cars with maybe some overflow, some, you know, so for the businesses that are going to be on the main floor.
I, I have the same concern too, and I talked to Zach and I believe we can't stipulate that. At least that's what I was told. We can't tell them they have to put more than what the zone actually specifies. Is that correct, Zach?
So I was, I was, I mentioned to Jared that I spoke to you and that's what I told you. And I, I am, I am wrong in that you can ask for additional parking because this is design review. This isn't necessarily a conditional use permit application like thing. So that is entirely within your purview. I apologize, Mr. Commissioner Pearson. So I, I apologize ahead of time. That was my mistake.
Can I caveat Zach's statement with one thing? Just as long as we're talking about parking and adding conditions of approval, you would do that, as, as Zach and I were discussing, through a condition of approval. And, and as long as you are backing up that condition of approval for something additional beyond just the minimum requirements, as long as you're trying to mitigate a serious impact in a reasonable way, that's perfectly fine. With that said, we do, we, as planning staff, we stand by the regs that we wrote and defended when we were talking about making changes. We allowed increases to parking where, where developers felt like it was warranted. These guys have kind of, in a way, they've gone all in on the bicycle thing and they're, they're willing to take a step into the dark and say, we're parking it at one-to-one with a few extra stalls for the commercial. Maybe there's not a lot of interest in the commercial right away, but people park on the street, run in and get whatever they need, or it's very lightly used for offices, insurance offices, that kind of thing. But we're parking a heck of a lot of bicycles. I've never seen anybody propose more than like 10 or 12. We begged for more bike parking on our city hall project and we got like 10. So it's, it's kind of fun in a way for planning geeks like Zach and I to see people go all in on the parking changes that they anticipate for the future. So with that said though, if you're uncomfortable with the level of parking and you want to make them add some stalls, that's within your purview, like Zach said, to require as a condition. As long as you back that up with a finding that says we, we feel like as a commission, the parking is underserved, even with that bicycle parking, so we're going to recommend, we're going to adopt a condition that says they need to add additional parking. Sorry, I talked longer, longer than I meant to there. Sorry about that.
Mr. Hall? Go ahead, Ms. Milkovich.
Well, you might be about ready to say this, Zachary. I, I'm sure I confuse the heck out of people because I'm a cyclist. I want us all to ride bikes everywhere. I'm a little bit of, little bit maybe lean toward environmentalist. Having said that, I do think we need a little bit more parking, but Mr. Hall, I don't think you've mentioned yet that part of the focus of the N60D zone was we were really hoping to make the city more walkable. So we're trying to push people to walk and take public transit, the bus, bikes. So that's the idea, punching down the parking.
I think that's a great comment, Lisa, that you don't want to lose sight, even in, even in additional parking added here. What we would caution against as your planning staff is not to lose sight of the fact that this is, albeit that it's east on Vine Street, a half a block. This is part of the downtown. And while a lot of it doesn't exist around it, there are going to be over the next 10 or 15 years, a lot of changes. This is a fairly urban area and I know that that's hard to fathom, but it's a fairly urban area. And we, part of it's just induced, I don't want to invoke induced demand for vehicles here, but it's kind of reverse induced demand. If you, people as they start to move into new projects, and I've seen this with, with a lot of projects and with my own family's experience and then friends' experience, as they move into these newer projects that have less parking, have limited access to different things, but more access to other things, people are changing the way that they experience this type of facility. Not, some people will look at leases in this, in this facility and say, that is just not for me. And that is okay. It's 130 units. There's 3 million of us here. We, this is a very small percentage of the people that need housing. It doesn't have to be for everybody. Just keep that in mind as you're reviewing, okay?
Can you speak to the, the mass transit that's being planned by this, by this area?
Absolutely. So we, there's a state street bus rapid transit is going to be our biggest, our biggest transit change in this area. So bus rapid transit will be, Ned could probably speak to this as well as anybody in, in the valley. There's going to be bus rapid transit on State Street that will move a lot of people through here and you're within a 10 or 15 minute walk of, in my view, the, the single most important station outside of downtown Salt Lake for, for, for mass transit. With its proximity, not just to the rail that'll take you from Ogden to Provo in an hour and a half, it's, it's got its proximity to State Street carrying 33,000 to 35,000 cars a day and a bus rapid transit line in the near future. And we're going to have bus rapid transit, the Mid Valley Connector, from that station down Seventh West and out into Taylorsville. We're, we're a major transit city on the verge of being very, very different, at least in our downtown, which I think is actually kind of, as long as we're pontificating about it, which is actually what I think is the neatest thing about Murray. We have these very different sections of the city, this very suburban east and west side where things are idyllic in, in the way that people viewed them in the 70s and 80s and they, they've remained that way. But we have the ability to add pockets of kind of neat urban villages that provide some services to those folks and make it more interesting and more traditional, actually reverting to more traditional development patterns in some of those areas without really impacting them because we have such a great core of the city to really do the more urban things that need to be done, not just for Murray's sake, but really to play a role in the region. And Ned, Ned's group, the WFC, taught me that years and years and years ago. So I'm, I'm still toeing the line, Ned, just so you know.
And Mr. Hall, that thought process, it's all the commercial development on the first floor.
I, I appreciate.
Go ahead.
Oh, I appreciate how forward-looking you are and, and I, I appreciate the density is coming and, and I appreciate changes. I think that at the same time, we shouldn't ask the residents of that neighborhood to underwrite the change by being inconvenienced with cars parking on the street and they should, they need to provide a a parking stall for each unit that they sell.
It could be done incrementally, absolutely. And I, I don't have any qualms at all about, as a staffer, about the planning commission requesting as a condition of approval, some additional stalls. Not at all.
And I believe if we spoke in our discussion, Jared, if I read it right, it would need to be, we need to specify how many.
How many, how many?
How many the commission wants to see.
Yes.
That's, that's going to be important as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, I pinpointed the place where I saw the notes about parking and it was during the, under the section of the city department review where the engineering division gives their comments on number nine, where, and that's where the engineering department says they recommend increasing the parking count to the maximum to avoid parking bleed into the surrounding neighborhoods. That's where I got my, my data from. So that's why I was saying we should, we need, that we might want to look at increasing to the maximum because of the city engineer's opinion.
Great.
Thank you for all of your questions. We have not talked yet to the applicant. So I think with some of our discussion, let's talk to the applicant and then we will definitely have time for more discussion because I know that there are a lot of issues and things about this project. So with that, if the applicant representative of the applicant would raise their hand on the webinar so that we can maybe get some information.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Joe Johnson, Seat Development. So appreciate being here tonight. Thanks for your time. And careful review of the project. A couple talking points that I just wanted to emphasize. First and foremost, Zach and Jared, when we originally met with them, two passionate planners about Murray City and the growth and the development. And I, I, I strongly, and I use the word strongly, want to underscore the zone in which we are developing in. The MCDD zone is a coveted zone to Murray City right now. If you go in and look at their master plan, where we are and what they have planned, it's a complete redevelopment of State Street and where Murray City Fire or the Police Department is, library, all of that. In so much that they, they, they made it paramount that we had a walking trail through our property, which normally you wouldn't do. But they were adamant about us having a sidewalk that took patrons and residents through our property that would connect onto Arlington. And we pushed back on that. We pushed back on, on some setback requirements on Vine Street. We pushed back on fire department needing a turnaround. And, you know, it was, it was very much relayed to us, this is the vision of Murray City. You know, Jared just highlighted what's going on and what's coming. And as a developer in our development team with our architects and working with the planners within this zone, we can talk about obviously today, you know, today. And planners always focus on today and tomorrow and, and near, and, and deep into the future. And the, the direction that society is going, not all at once, but people are working from home a lot more. People are, the way of life is changing. People work from home. They want to walk to the grocery store. They want to walk to the park. They want to walk to Costco. They want to be able to get on a scooter and zip around instead of getting into their car. And we're trying to embrace that. Yeah, we've gone all in and we believe in, in this product being a walkable site to the upcoming growth and development in Murray City. We want to be part of that. And so it's not every day as a developer that you go into a city, you buy a piece of property in a zone and not try to go bend and twist a planner's arm to, to give you all types of reductions on a property. We've actually had to acquiesce to a lot of things that we didn't want to do to meet the stringent requirements of a lot of the engineers, fire department, and your planners looking out for the betterment of Murray. So as, as it relates to parking, we have designed the building and the project around what the code and the requirements allow us to do. And it's very similar to projects all over and right growth, we can't stop growth and we want to, we want to grow cautiously and carefully. But I also ask you to please understand that we are in this MCDD zone. We're not on some outlier street of a neighborhood. We are close to neighborhoods, but we are in a very particular zone, which there's not a lot of it. And, and this is where Murray City wants their density is in this zone. For people to be able to commute, walk around and create the walkable community that I know their growth and their visions incorporate. And so I am, I'm happy with the, the product that we've put out. We've been very careful about how we designed it. Obviously in this zone, they want commercial on the main floor. We created a, two access points for people to drive in and out. It's not one access, it's two accesses. So there will be highlighted signs that direct business clients in and out of the locations that was mentioned before. That would, that's absolutely on our radar to be able to get people in and out, as well as park on the street. As well as park on the street and there is street parking on Vine Street with the setbacks that we've had to do and create for. The city engineers. And and so there's been a lot of thought that's gone into this, we're we're way, way down the road on this. And to now go ahead and say, well, we're going to throw the maximum parking at you. I mean, it redesigns the whole entire building. And I just want you to be cognizant of that as you're contemplating. A project that we spent already hundreds and hundreds of hours on. To get this right, and it's not us just throwing it at you. We've worked with your planners, we've worked with your engineers, we've worked with your fire department. Every step of the way to get to where we are tonight. And so. Please consider that as you think about. This project going forward and what we've tried to do to meet requirements to be here tonight. With the building that we presented in front of you. And we've also tried to create units that are that are family friendly, they're not micro units. They're good size, one and two bedroom units. That that will attract good, good tenants and good renters to your to your neighborhoods, they're not. Micros studio units that we're trying to pack into Murray City. They're good, they're they're great units that will be. Family friendly and and. And young couple friendly newlywed type people, so. I didn't know if there's anything that J Z W or my other partner that's online wanted to mention, but. I will defer to them if they want to add anything to my comments before I let you guys respond.
Okay. Um, I don't know.
We're raising our hand and just. About time in designing this and part of. The way we've designed it was with this commercial space, we were kind of hoping that the bike parking. Would encourage people to bike to work in this place instead of drive. And then we could have the units at that one to one ratio. And then we also have the carpool spaces and that sort of thing. So one of our main focuses was trying to get. The commute with the commercial space more of the walkable, more of the biking. And that sort of thing. And and try to maintain that one hundred and thirty around that one hundred and thirty stalls for the residents. But. And we have tried very hard to keep us to keep the the parking at a good number as high as we can with the site. And the. And the exceptions to the site that we've had to kind of make, so. A lot of thought has gone into it and. And we're pretty proud of the design and what we've been able to to put out. From Murray City.
Maybe just one last clarification, I'm I'm here with with Lee here, but. There is one hundred and thirty-nine, just to clarify how many stalls we do have, we have one hundred and thirty-nine total stalls. Just a clarification there.
Great, thank you, I think our packet maybe does say one hundred and thirty-seven, so we have a little bit. Less than that, so thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Pearson, is this a chance that you want to maybe speak, ask your questions to? The applicant about some of your traffic study? Questions?
I mean, if they want to speak to the traffic study and how it's going to reduce the amount of traffic by putting it there, they could, I'm not sure if they know the answer to that.
Yeah, we. We have looked at that and we have reviewed it, but we are not the traffic engineers either, so I apologize, but we. We don't know exactly. How that works, it did look. I I can see what you're saying where you think it it goes up, I do think there was a few improvements that they were planning on and I kind of wish we had them on here because. I think they know a little bit more about what what they're saying there, but at the same time, I recognize. Kind of what you're seeing, so I don't know if that's something we could get back to you guys in the future. Or something after we talked to these these engineers that actually ran these numbers.
The city engineer and in the city engineers review suggests that a a level two traffic study be. Be conducted, which I think is a little bit more. In depth. Than what. Hales Engineering. Has done looking at delay. So.
And if if I can jump in there for a second, Commissioner Hacker, I think that's a that's a good point, and then. What you take away from. The the table, I think you have to allow for the the possibility that there's maybe an error in the number in the table, just. That that doesn't make sense, so if you if you focus. More on the summary of the findings, the key findings being that the levels of service are maintainable. And not severely impacted, and then you you couple that with Trey's condition that. They look at a level two study going forward, but it's not enough to scare the one hundred and thirty units in the traffic they would generate are not enough to scare him off of. How appropriate the development is. Vis a vis traffic at that intersection. So that's that's probably the main takeaway for me, there there may be an error in the number in the table. I know I never make errors when I'm putting together tables.
I think here's, here's, I think I have the answer to the table for Jake. So. In that top line of the table, it says D, so the column existing twenty twenty background. It says D fifty point seven, so that's fifty point seven seconds of delay. At the intersection. Which equates to level of service D. So. Even though the the level or the delay goes down. It may go down. But but the real calculate or the real number that or the real. Item you're looking at is the D, which is. The level of service, it's still low level of service. U dot likes to keep a level of service C, which is a little bit higher. But so all of those numbers fifty point seven down to thirty-six point two. Back up to fifty point nine, they all fall in this range. Which is level of service. It's still bad.
Okay, but with the full traffic study. The. Traffic going westbound and eastbound. On left turns and through traffic are both F's. I think that's going to impact that the most, but I I think to Jared's point, it's possible the numbers are right and. I I mean, I've. I think it's obviously going to increase it and. What I was hoping to get out of this was just how much of an impact that's going to be and. Based on the numbers, it almost looks like they're saying it's going to help the situation and not hurt it.
No, I don't think so, and I think Trey Stokes, as as Travis was saying. I think Trey has already made the recommendation to provide a the Department of. Transportation Level Two Traffic Impact Study. For this project.
Well, one other thought, if I can really quick, I think in there it says that. The existing background and then they talk about the mitigating existing. I think when it goes to the existing plus project, that includes the mitigating with it. So it's saying, you know, if we just mitigate it, it's going to be at thirty-six point two. And if we have it mitigated and do the project, it's going to be at thirty-nine point four. I think it just doesn't show that mitigated there, and I think that's why it's.
Okay, well, that would make much more sense if that's the case. So so let me ask a question to staff then, if. For these mitigations, then that would be a city responsibility for us to do that or not do that. Correct?
Yes. And as as since. I I apologize, I don't know if it was Gary or Lee that made mention of it. So I looked on the traffic study and that is the. The so I know you have it. Commissioner Pearson is on page twenty-one. If you're looking at a PDF or page fifteen, if you're looking at a paper copy. You can't see it unless you zoom in really close, but that is with the mitigating. Thing, a through lane there. So I think that's where we find it.
Great, thank you.
And just anecdotally, that clearly is where the backup exists. Westbound is because it's a single lane of travel and the cars do back up there and. And it's often that you won't make it through the first light cycle there, but. I drive it almost every day and I routinely get stuck there for a second light.
Well, you used to.
Um, yeah, no, I think that that's a lot of great discussion and I I feel like because the level two traffic impact study is included. You know, for these applications for designer view. I think that that will give us a lot more information when that's completed, so. And I think that we'll be able to look at this again, right, is that the. Once we have those that traffic study.
So, no, what what so if the the traffic impact study would be done. During the building permit. Process, I would assume. If you grant approval. If you want to see that level two, then you could. Make a recommendation to. Postpone this until that's done or whatever you'd like to do, but typically. When we've requested those in the past, it's usually at the building permit level and Trey reviews those.
And the point of that commissioners is that if it if it come, if that level two study comes out with other recommendations, like right now, the recommendation is to make those both through lanes to to deal with the issues. If that level two came back and said, no, this is actually has to happen, we need to retime. This light and the next two intersections out and and make those through lanes and then. Do something else too wide and something etcetera. Then that has to happen for the for the building permit, that's why he leaves that condition open ended, so he can deal with whatever may come from a level two study. I don't think he anticipates anything that drastic from that study, just based on. On the kind of trip generation that departments. Have, so we're probably fine, but you wouldn't necessarily need to see it back, I I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay. So I know that we have had lots of discussion, I know that a lot has happened, but we have not opened this agenda item up for public comment. So at this time, I would like to open it for public comment. I know that we did receive a few emails previous to the meeting that were included in our packet and then. I'm sure that we've had some. Oh, there's a part that I need to read. Um, I will now open this meeting for public comment, if you would like to make a comment to this agenda item, please email the. If you are participating in the meeting tonight through the Zoom webinar registration and you would like to make a live comment, please click the raise hand button. If you are making a live comment, we ask that you will limit your comment to three minutes and we will time those. And if you have submitted an email comment previous to the meeting, it will now be read into the record, but we ask that you do not make any additional live comments. And so we would invite those that would like to make a comment regarding this agenda item.
We do have a few comments that came in after your packet was prepared and I can read those to start with if you'd like.
That would be great.
Okay.
Going on and on.
Let's see. So I will start with. This is a a comment from. Joyce Peters. It says, here are some concerns we have, or sorry, for, sorry, not from Joyce Peters, from Peter Hoffman and Joyce Crocker. Here are some concerns we have with this development. Number one, will public parking be allowed on Vine Street at this property? If so, it raises a concern with the amount of traffic already on Vine Street. And should not be allowed, number two. With one hundred and thirty new residential units, this will add more traffic to an already busy intersection at Vine and Atwood. Developers should be responsible for the cost of a traffic light at this intersection if the development is approved. Again, that was from Peter Hoffman and Joyce Crocker, two twenty-three East Vine Street. Have a comment from, let's see. Have a comment from Brent Barnett. It says, I, dear planning commission, and Brent, if you're listening, and this is the, this is the corrected one that you sent in. After the first one. Dear planning commission, thanks for all your work for our city, here are some thoughts on the Vine Street project. Number one, a horrible idea, of course, the architects have worked hard to create these drawings. Nonetheless, as a citizen, one has to say that this project is a horrible idea for this neighborhood. Height, the height of this proposed structure is just ridiculous, if built, it would tower over the residences on the street. Leaving people's homes in shadow much of the year. Buffer and transition zone, there is absolutely no buffer or transition zone, as would be expected with good zoning practice. There are hundreds of sites in the city for such a project. Such a project should never be allowed to intrude in a neighborhood of single story residences. Number two, insensitive zoning. The proposal is a clear demonstration of how insensitive the city has been with the downtown zoning. For years, the city has been completely insensitive to any desires of this important neighborhood. It is about time that the neighborhoods spoke up. We need city leaders who can demonstrate understanding of good zoning and good planning. Number three, zoning must protect neighborhood character. The number one rule of zoning is to protect the character of neighborhoods. The zoning on Vine Street had completely violated. This fundamental rule, the city shows no ability to understand the importance of this neighborhood character in zoning decisions. This project is another embarrassment for Murray. It again highlights the city's lack of understanding of the importance of neighborhood and citizen input. This is another in a series of failures, a pattern of allowing our neighborhoods to be negatively impacted by misguided zoning. Number four, effective neighborhood input. The residents of this neighborhood have every reason to be angry with Blair Camp, and why shouldn't they be angry? The mayor has taken no initiative to address the many concerns of the neighborhood. A, no personal involvement, it would be only logical that any that an effective mayor. Would make an effort to work personally with the citizens in the neighborhood to find good solutions for the area, yet this has not happened. B, no qualified planning experts. One would also expect that the mayor could have easily brought in a qualified planning expert to work with the neighborhood. This has not happened. C, no work with city council representative. It seems that an effective mayor would also would have also. A mayor could have also at any time worked with the city council representative in the neighborhood. To find solutions for the property that would work for the neighborhood, again, this has been ignored. Number five, neighborhood influence, finally let us acknowledge that the will of this neighborhood has been repeatedly ignored. It seems that unless the residents of the neighborhood organize, as urban neighborhoods in other cities have, the Murray Central neighborhood will continue to get stomped on. And marginalized by its city government. From Brent B Barnett. And then the other, I believe Zach was from Janice and she wanted to speak live instead, correct?
That one, and then there was the one from Amy Thomas as well.
Oh, sorry, yeah, let me get that one, thank you. This is from Amy Thomas. It doesn't have her address, I know she lives there on Vine Street or owns the home on Vine Street right near the project. I am not challenging whether development is needed, but rather how it should proceed. And under what spatial and design constraints. Just a casual look through the Murray Citizens Facebook group of over five point six thousand members at. Any of the new proposed development plans, despite the very clear need for more bone for more homes in this area. Why is there so much opposition to new developments? Why does the opposition often span across demographics and age groups? Many neighborhoods are feeling as if they're victims of development. With no way to improve or even influence what is happening. As I've talked to others in the community, it has become. Extremely clear that the public is seeing the planning commission and process as a barrier. Rather than as a public tool. Community discussions indicate that we need buildings that reflect the history, character and identity of their surroundings somewhere, not anywhere. Right now, we have beautiful neighborhoods with a lot of charm whose character and uniqueness is being eroded by development. They're creating anywherevilles and mass produced boxes with no attempt at placemaking, landscaping, layout or provision for local character and local needs. Buildings which efface or deface the character of a street or townscape rather than harmonizing with it or adding to it. Such buildings by their absence of a facade, their non alignment, their alienating materials, their height and scale offend most of us most of the time. Neighborhoods that make you ill, in general, people dislike ways of building that increase anxiety, depression, ill health and alienation. Whether in residents or in those who live nearby. The problem is that the current planning process tends to lock people into confrontational views without enabling a constructive dialogue. About what's best for the future. Those opposing development are good and normal people acting rationally or comprehensively. Rather than pantomime villains. This opens up a new question, what types of development and development process. Are most likely to manage their concerns and help them mitigate risk to their financial self-interest or emotional well being. Number one, start with the question, what is the spirit of a place, what is considered to be beautiful and important? What do we, the residents, care about? Ask what can development bring to the site and the community to enhance it? How will we benefit? Number two, give us certainty about the look and feel of the places, streets and homes that will be built. Number three, increase the sense of genuine agency, engage as early as possible, ensure that we feel as if we have. Meaningfully fed into the overall design and development process. Number three, increase the sense of genuine agency, engage as early as possible, ensure that we feel as if we have meaningfully fed into the overall design and development process. Number four, give us confidence that necessary infrastructure and services will accompany new development so that meaningful places are built, not just housing estates. Number five, give us confidence that local landscape and biodiversity will be preserved or enhanced. Uh, right now, we don't have any of these feelings about the Vine proposal. One of the most charming streets in Murray, full of beautiful and unique 19th century homes, is being defaced. Buildings maximize their value by conforming to their surroundings. All we ask is that you preserve the charm, uniqueness and appeal of this neighborhood by altering the design to conform with its surroundings. As our representatives, we ask that you please take these comments into serious consideration. Uh, thank you. And that should, that should be all the comments then.
I haven't seen anybody raise their hand yet.
Okay. To this, uh, agenda item, please raise your hand.
Okay, I do have somebody. Hold on one second.
And then we'll ask you to state your name and address for the record before you make your comment.
Okay, am I on now?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to ask before I start my comments, could I please be given five minutes? I have worked hard and I feel like with this being the only time the public has been able to, um, make comment, that I'd be, uh, able to be given a little more time.
I mean, we are asking all residents to stick to the three minutes, so.
Okay, I will do it. I will do it. Never mind. Okay, in the packet that you guys received tonight, for tonight's agenda, there are a number of areas for the design review item I wish there was time to comment on, but I want to quickly point out a couple. So I invite you to go to, um, section three, design review, standard review that starts on page 53 of the packet. At letter D, it states, this project does not jeopardize the health, safety or welfare of the public. Question, without talking to the public, how is this determined? Now to letter E. The project is in harmony with the purpose of the MCCD zone and adheres to the principles of the design guidelines. A big problem with this statement is that due to the MCCD zone being majorly altered in November 2019, the city currently has no design guidelines in place that follows the current zoning. The proposed revised design guidelines have yet to go before the city council. And given that the currently outdated approved design guidelines do not match MCCD zoning, letter E's statement is not accurate. Looking at just these two examples being not truly accurate, I ask that the council delay a vote on. Accurate. And I do feel that it is very sad that this meeting is the only opportunity where the public has a chance to participate in design review decisions regarding their community. At this stage of the game, the public's comments appear to be an afterthought. The city has already worked through issues with the applicant that came up after review by the DRC and city departments. A development such as this has the potential to drastically change the surrounding neighborhood, which is where I live. And yet, we have, we as citizens have had no opportunity to be involved in the process. I ask that there be consideration of how the public can be involved in developments that can change our community prior to the last moment. Recognizing that this development is one of the mixed use applications that were received prior to the moratorium does allow it to continue per the current zoning. But delaying a vote on this design review allows the applicant to work further with the city to adapt their development to better complement the direction the city is looking to go regarding mixed use rather than it being as one of the last built with the problematic pre-moratorium mixed use zoning. Okay, so overall, in the mixed use developments that have already been built throughout Murray, and I've really looked into this, practically all commercial retail spaces are empty. So I ask, how effective are additional mixed use developments for our community?
Fifteen seconds.
Tonight, I asked the commission to delay their vote and take time to review the public comments and the concerns that have been stated by you in the commission that were made here tonight. I asked the applicant to work with the city staff, and I know you already have, but please, please know that we're just barely being able to be involved in this. And surround, to work with the city staff and surrounding neighborhood in creating a structure more in harmony with downtown and the historic surroundings, along with reviewing the direction the city looks to go regarding mixed use developments. I hope that any future build in our downtown will be built with an identity of high quality that will remain a vibrant building for many years to come. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. There any, yes, Lisa, did you have a?
Madam Chair, I, I might have missed it, but did our last guest state her name and address for the record?
Uh, she did send in an email, so I think we might have her name and.
My name is Jana Strobel and I live in Murray.
Will you give your address for the record?
Oh, I thought we didn't have to do that anymore. Okay, um, 4912 Wasatch.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Um, Zach, have there been any other raised hands?
Um, give me just one second.
I have an additional email comment, if you want. I was asking for raised hands, is that all right?
Yes.
This is an email that was received, um, just, just a few minutes ago during comments from Margaret Horton. It says, hello, I've listened to the broadcast of the meeting tonight and I have a concern about the Vine project. I am concerned about the increase in traffic this development will cause. It is already such a busy intersection near State Street. I wonder about people actually visiting the retail sites at the bottom of the building. I personally wouldn't want to deal with parking in that area. Will it really decrease traffic? Will it be pedestrian friendly? Is there a reason why there are so many units? Also, the height of the building seems tall for that area. And while it may match the hotel down the street, it may take away from the charm of the older homes in that area. I guess it's too late for zoning plans, but I am deeply concerned about the traffic increase. Thank you, Margaret Horton.
And I have not had anybody else raise their hand either.
Okay, well then, um, I think that we can close the public comment portion, um, because we have received some great comments. Um, staff, is there anything that you want to address from those? Um, things that were brought up.
Yeah, um, and so I, I will speak to, so specifically, um, a couple of Janice's things. So the project, um, she's, she's stated under number, or letter E in the design review standards. Um, we currently use the, um, current design guidelines as our, um, as, as, uh, light review. So we look at the principles that are placed in that and that's where we use. Time, yes, you may have, uh, the planning commission, um, has provided, um, or recommended for the adoption of the new design guidelines. Those haven't been adopted by the city council yet. So we are under the same assumption as the, um, the previous design guidelines and those design intents. Um, so we did use those. Also, I apologize, and Jared, maybe you caught it, but I didn't, um, I, I didn't know her, her first comment, what letter it was in response to.
It was like.
Was it item D? That would.
Okay, um, so, let's see.
She, she signed page 53, letter D.
Yeah, looking at that, um, yeah, I, I can't really speak, speak to that. I mean, the, we are, the, the zone was written, um, with public comment in, involved when the zone was adopted. Um, and, and through private development, people are allowed to build things on their property. Um, and, and that's, that, that's pretty much the case. That's one of the things that I would touch on is that, um, though I, I understand and I, um, I see this more often than not, that, that the, um, that public feels that they're not getting their say on a project, but at the same time, they don't own the property or control the property, just as, as, as as developer, you know, some, as you would your neighbor. Um, so if your neighbor built a shed on their property, they're allowed to do that. People that, that, the people that own this property are allowed to develop it, subject to the zoning that was, that was placed on the property. And that's, unfortunately, those are the rules and, and we have to abide by those rules. So I mean, that's kind of what I would say there.
Mr. Smallwood?
Please.
To that comment, um, now I want to tread lightly because I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with some of the things she said, but for the public involvement, um, that really is a long-term type of involvement to be, to affect the situation to appropriate. The best way to be involved in this topic is to be involved in discussions on zoning, correct?
Yes.
Anything else you can say about that?
I, I mean, uh, um, Ms. Strobel has been, has been very, um, active in, in, in the MCCD. She's, she's been here, um, working on that since I've, since I've started, which is three, almost three years ago. So I understand, and, and yes, zoning, um, and this is for all, all the residents. The zoning amendments and zone changes are, are really where the, the public can can contribute to, uh, to future projects, because that's what dictates how we evaluate a project is based on that zoning. So that's kind of what I would say there. I don't know if that's what you were kind of looking for, Lisa, but I, I would suggest that, yes, during, during zoning code rewrites, um, that's or zoning code updates, that's, that's the best time to get involved. And, yeah.
Chair Patterson, can I take just a minute?
Yes, of course, and I, I don't know, um, I'm sure that you'll maybe speak to just how citizens can have input and be involved in projects like this, because I think that was enough for big questions.
Sure, so I, I want to go back to November, late fall, November of 2019, just for a minute and say that after several months of effort and conversations, uh, with property owners in the area and those who had recently been through some of the planning processes that had been in place with the MCCD guidelines that were on the books back in 2019. We made a very conscious effort to proactively restore private property rights with the code that we brought forward and recommended to the planning commission. That's not to say that it wasn't without controversy, because it was. Who were on the commission two years ago would remember that, um, we ended up taking forward a recommendation to the city council that was what staff had initially recommended and then a planning commission recommendation, which was different from what we had initially brought forward and the council then in November of 19 did adopt changes and, um, decided to leave the design review committee intact. Uh, what the staff had initially brought forward did not include that. And, um, so, you know, that was in response, leaving the design review committee in place was in response to many of the public comments that came forward in that time. And, um, and so I think in the end, the council, obviously because they passed it, felt like they found the right balance with what the citizen comments had been, what the planning commission comments had been and what they eventually passed. But I think really, the biggest message is just that the process really was intentionally restoring private property rights that had been so restricted for so long with many of the properties in the area. And we would consider design essentially a private property right. So while one person may look at that design and not find it favorable, there's other people that would like it. And it's very difficult to regulate that or to try and write code for that. Um, the design review committee is a group of Murray residents. I, I don't, I think we do have one member right now who was living in Murray when he was appointed. He does not live in Murray any further, but that is also a citizen body that has an expertise in architecture, landscape, architecture that, um, reviews this. And so there is, in many ways, public input that has been built into this process, maybe not particular to this exact project, but there has been public input and the, really the biggest message I just wanted to convey was, you know, if you, if you do think back to that change in the ordinance, it was intentional and it was to restore the private property rights. And so going back to what Zach said just a minute ago, you know, if I want to build a shed on my own property or a, a, a home on my own property and I prefer a craftsman style and my neighbor next door to me wants a very traditional or even an Adobe stucco, why should I have a say on what style their home is? And that's really kind of the way we drafted the ordinance. And, and that's eventually what the city council adopted.
Just to chime in real quick, um, the applicant, Joe Johnson, has raised his hand if you, if the commission wants to, uh, hear from the applicant.
And I do think there's a couple of points that were made by the comments that we still, still address.
Yeah, brought up by the public. So, um, yeah, let's have the applicant maybe try and address some of the public comment.
And Mr. Johnson, you should just be able to unmute yourself. I haven't disallowed you from speaking yet.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, great. Uh, first of all, thank you for those comments. Uh, I think it was Michelle Greenwood. Uh, I really appreciated the, the comments there and your, your insight. Maybe just to talk about, uh, a couple of the comments that some of the neighbors made. You know, when, when I, when we purchased this property, I mean, our first meeting was with Jared. Uh, we sat with him and we discussed the project. And we, we got to know this MCCD zone. And if you look at this piece of property and how Murray City has, um, aligned their zoning map, you know, there's commercial to the west. I know the neighbor to the east who owns the duplexes or triplexes, whatever they are. He, he may have plans into you guys already. He's had conversations with me about, uh, sharing, um, you know, storm drain sewer, um, responsibilities. So I know he's in redevelopment, you know, price ballpark from the back of the property. You can see all the pickleball courts down below that is down by the rec center. Um, the police department is right there, and then you've got Home to Suites across the street. So I've done a lot, a lot of real estate development and I, I recently, I'm, I'm currently doing a project up in Mill Creek City on 33rd South where my, my property was zoned multifamily. And, and, and it, my backyard was to residential neighbors. And I went through a lot of the same heartache and, and frustration with, with homeowners feeling like I shouldn't be able to build a multifamily project on a piece of property that's zoned by Mill Creek City multifamily. And the comment made that we all have our personal property rights. I understand that there's things that affect us emotionally, but I don't want, I simply do not want the principle of, we own a piece. the principle of we own a piece of property that gives us rights to build something on it. And if emotionally affects someone or stirs them emotionally in the wrong way, don't want to get that to get in the way of us moving forward tonight um to do this because we have, we have gone through this, the process that your elected officials and your paid officials, Murray City representative, we've gone and we've stepped through every bucket that they've asked us to step through and jumped through every hoop. And that's the way it's designed. When we met with the design review committee, when we met with your planners and engineers, we've we've done that. And we're happy to address some of your comments to make it the best building we can. But I simply don't want to table this um for any reason that we should tonight when we've we've come a long way to get here tonight. And we're excited to move this project forward in the right way um as property owners and 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 put something that you can all be proud of there as well as we can. And I believe that's our, you know, as a property owner, that's our right. Thank you very much.
Um, at this time, I think I would like to bring the discuss back to the commissioners. Um, any thoughts or comments that you want to add to this discussion?
Um, Maren, I think there's two comments from the public we still need to address. And then I have one other comment that hasn't been addressed yet that I'd like to talk about the fencing around the property. Um, but the public's comment on uh mixed use applications and in the moratorium, I believe that um this zoning mixed use was set up for the MCCD zoning originally. And the reason for the moratorium is because it's now being applied in other areas of the city. So we should speak to that more.
And I might, um, that that was the discussion of the city council. I might defer to to Jared and or Melinda to speak to the to the moratorium a little bit more and
Something to do with this project.
I I wasn't there. I wasn't there for that one.
Yeah, I I I think that Commissioner Nye is correct that essentially the moratorium is irrelevant to this conversation because the application is vested in the MCCD zone at as as it is currently and approved on the books. And so um, there's, you know, apart from the MCCD zone is included in the moratorium and it is a mixed use zone. Um, any changes to the ordinance would not have any way to influence this project because it's it's vested in what sits right now.
Great. Thank you for that explanation about, yeah. The more random mixed use. Lisa, what was the other?
Empty retail spaces? Was the other comment from the public?
I I was curious about that because I uh from what I understand, there are, except for the pieces of property that the city owns, I believe most of it is filled. Um, especially at, um, so like Home to Suites, I think every every place is filled there. You have uh the Thai pho place and soy sushi. Um, I like that place, so I I talk about it a lot. Um, and um, you know, we have Fizz down the street. We have an insurance company. Um, we have a CBD place um on the other side of State Street. Uh, we have Dame Murray Music. So I I I I'm curious to know what empty storefronts there are because I I don't, oh, wait, Travis might know one. So.
So, no, I I I completely agree with you. And I think the comparison that's being brought up is Fire Clay. And Fire Clay and this area are two completely just different conversations. Fire Clay is a brand new district that is built in an industrial zone with no surrounding commercial element that ever has existed in that interior of any meaning whatsoever. And so, yes, those are new projects and those projects have not, for whatever reason, sparked development in there. But this project is in a vibrant neighborhood that has lots of small local businesses that are run all over the place. There are limited empty storefronts. There's a few on State Street, but State Street is a problematic property anyways, simply because of the volume of traffic. It's not really conducive to people walking to businesses there. So I think you're always going to have some level of challenge there, but this project is not Fire Clay. So I think she is correct when she says, you know, there are areas that that have zero, um, you know, businesses in there. That's not this. I think this will become a vibrant community um where you will see small restaurants and other small businesses go in there because of the proximity to the park, because of the fact they're across the street from the hotel, because they have a vibrant, vibrant neighborhood directly adjacent to it. Those people are going to come to to support those businesses. They're not going to turn away a local business because they were unhappy that it was built in an apartment complex. I just don't believe that that's the way that this is going to work out. You know, and and to the developer's credit, they could have come in here and they could have asked for a 10-story building. They did not ask for a 10-story building. They asked for a seven-story building. I think that that does pay some respect to the neighborhood. It's a transition zone as well. The neighborhood, this is a hard stop to the MCCD district for that neighborhood. So this is, this is really the first interaction that they're going to have moving forward into the west side of the of the city. It um, this is really kind of that that hard edge that they will come up against. Um, another thing I'll point out is it's 2021 and you know, architectural styles have changed. This isn't Murray in the 19th century anymore. It's charming the areas that were built that way. They're the most walkable parts of the city. I will defend and protect those interior neighborhoods to, you know, forever and ever and ever. But that doesn't mean that all future development should try to recreate what happened 130 or 140 years ago. The city has evolved. Architecture has evolved, ideas of design have evolved. And to just turn our back on it and say, nope, we can't do that because, well, we want it to stay like it's always been. It's just not realistic. Um, another credit to the to the project in general is that they have made a more interesting building and a more aesthetically pleasing building than the Home to Suites across the street. That's an ugly building. They did very, very, very little to 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 make that building stand out. I think that this building is is a different approach. And yes, it's a podium, you know, apartment complex. It's it's a it's a large building. But if you go and look at some of the buildings that have been built in downtown Salt Lake and in the Sugar House area, they don't have the variety of front. They don't have the 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 variety of materials that's being proposed here. I I just think it's a better looking and a better quality project than we've seen in other parts of the valley. And so I commend the developer on that and that's all I have to say.
I I would add, um, just as as a kind of aside and aside here, that um Fire Clay is starting to get tenants. Um, I've just, I've just signed off on a tenant improvement for a gym um in the area. Um, and then also Murray Depot, that yes, it is, it is empty, but it's been open for what, less than six months, I think, Jared? Um, it's it's just barely.
It's barely finished. It's barely finished being open. And I know they're they're in talks with tenants for the ground floor there as well. So.
Fire Clay is still in its adolescence. It's Fire Clay is a young, new area. It's going to take time, but it will become vibrant.
Well, and to build off that, my thought about those commercial places being empty was also that we're in a pandemic. And so a lot of those places have really struggled in 2020 to open or to find resident, you know, commercial people that can open right now. And so I think that if that would be really, um, it seems kind of narrow sided to say that the commercial occupants me see right now, um, we're that we're looking for the future, right? And we won't always be in a pandemic and those those places will be filled if they're available, I think. Um, is there any further comments?
I I one last comment. It goes back to my original point, but um, you know, I I I think that the the developer and and the staff have done a good job um with uh having this, having this be a conforming use. I I really reject the the bicycle reduction in the in the in the chart on page six. Um, I think that the the vehicular, um, the total vehicular requirement of 140 should be enforced and it should not be. I don't think bicycle reduction today is practical to reduce the parking requirement uh that would be part of the of the code. Um, so that's that's my comment is that I don't I don't find that, I don't find the the bicycle reduction um section to be to be reasonable and feasible. Um, you know, at the same time, I I I I would support the minimum vehicle requirement, but I think at least the minimum needs to be needs to be adhered to.
Madam Chair, can I ask, we discuss one more smaller, lighter topic? Um, fencing, and I I hope I'm not interpreting this wrong, but my interpretation of the presentation is there's they're planning to have fencing around the east and south side of the property. I'd like to talk about for a moment because our whole focus in the MCC, well, not our whole, one of our major focuses in the MCCD area is walkability and trying to get people to walk and bike. And if we keep fencing in every single property, it's going to be hard to get through them all. And there's only one path through it. Is that fencing required, necessary? I feel like it just blocks the property off from others around it.
It it is not required um to to be in there. That's entirely up to them if they want to put in the fencing. Um, let me pull up. Sorry, I want to pull this up because I want to verify. So it's, yeah, on the, you said on the, did you say on the south and east or south and west?
Let me look again, but I believe it's all along the south toward Arlington, all the the road and all along there and on the uh
And I think
the side.
And I think that's mostly provided um because there are existing um dwellings there um that are on the east side. Um, i- if you don't mind, I'll I'm gonna share my screen again so that you can kind of see. Maybe if it lets me. So looking at here, there is a duplex on this on this site right here. There's a very tiny home on this site. And then there are uh two duplexes located here. So fencing would mostly be provided uh to provide some privacy away from from this, from these these neighbors.
I guess I guess along with what you're saying to the west, that is the post office and you'd want fencing.
Yeah, the west is post office and and another open building. Um, that's, I I think there is a tenant in that building as well.
We we've talked a lot about traffic, so I apologize, but we haven't said anything about traffic to Arlington. No one's concerned. It looked good. I I think I, I don't know, my, I live in the area, so I'm glad there's a second in and out. So it might take some of the pressure off of Vine, but any thoughts? Are we good?
And I think it may. Um, I think in the traffic study, if I I don't have it up anymore.
Arlington's traffic levels are all As right now. They're all, they're all really good. Arlington is going to be much more integral, Zach, if I'm not mistaken, when and the reason that we we pushed for the developer to have the improvements on Arlington, not just on Vine Street, is because it'll be when we eventually move from City Hall, uh from from where we are now to the new City Hall and City Hall's land is available for development, Arlington will be a whole different ballgame. Um, but right now, it's gonna, it's gonna go along at really easy levels still probably. There might be probably more than anybody, residents of the apartments might sneak out Arlington instead of Vine to go right on State Street or something, probably right, but doesn't seem to indicate that in the in the levels of service, but who knows?
It did show in that traffic study too, that Arlington would stay in A, even with the development.
People, people forget about Arlington. Sometimes it it just seems Arlington is, I I we've been a long time, so I won't get into it. But Arlington, I think, is one of those streets that the visual cues, we talk about visual cues in planning a lot with streets and their traffic and their speeds. And Arlington does not feel like a big street that's going to take you somewhere and and at high speeds, so you don't use it. Um, that'll go away one day, but not not in a couple of years.
Once there's a whole redeveloped site on the
Or we'll maintain that look and feel to keep it low trafficked because people will be walking there, not driving.
Right. That's what I meant, Zach, when I said what I said.
Yeah, guys, I apologize. I know I've been talking about, I guess it's an area that affects me as well. I feel like a couple of our residents mentioned height in their concerns. Should we comment or has enough been said?
Um, I felt like I did comment. It could be a 10-story building. They're well within their their development rights.
I I would, I would concur with Commissioner Nae that, yeah, that that's been addressed. Um, they're allowed to build up to, I believe, 135 feet and 10 stories. Um,
And what is the height?
I'm sorry, 75.
No, we set different limits for the height on Vine right there. I don't think it's 135.
There there's a setback, uh, and I think that this site meets that setback and is allowed for full height.
Right, Zach, that Melinda, you're thinking of the corner itself would be would be more limited where the, this is outside of where we set that other limit. It's it's
This on Jones Court?
Right. So this 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 project didn't include the Jones Court corner property. So
Okay.
That's what you're remembering exactly correctly.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, yeah, I thought I was done, but I'll I'll go back to Commissioner Lowry's uh point. I'm all about walkability. I'm all about people being able to cycle there. But I tend to agree that it's challenging to believe that reducing, you know, 10 spots uh with bicycles is going to work. However, it's codified, so I don't know how we get away from the fact that they're allowed to calculate a reduction, but I still, I I even and I don't believe in lots of parking. I have a little heartburn about the total number of parking on site. Um, you know, my heartburn is probably less than 10 spots, but I I I do have a little bit of heartburn with it and
Yeah. I would agree with that. And I think to build off of that, what we've been wanting bike and bike parking and support of that in this area for so long, and I was very excited to see that. But I would like to see it in addition to the right amount of spaces, right? Not as a way to, and I know that's how it's written in the code and that they're allowed to do that, but I feel like that would be great to have that parking and encourage that and have the little bit buffer number of spots and not use that as a way to, you know, get away from spots. Um, I I really, there are some things that I really love about this project. I love the loading and unloading zone for drop off and Grubhub and, you know, whatever. I think that I think that there are a lot of things that are really forward thinking about this project. Um, and I think that I I do understand what the developer is saying is that they have created a project specific to this zone. And you can see that how, when, you know, they said when they talked with staff, they had to, they pushed back on some things and they said, no, this is what we want in the MCCD. And I feel like this is the project that we in a lot of ways have been waiting for and wanting an empty lot that has been sitting there, you know, unused for so long. And so it's a little bit hard for me, um, you know, when when people say that that there would be a better use for this lot. And I feel like right now it's nothing. Right now it's empty. And so I really see it as such um an asset to this part of the neighborhood. Um, I lived on Lostet Street. I would have loved to be able to walk down my street and go to a restaurant at the bottom of a hotel or at the bottom of an apartment building or go get a massage there or go to, you know, a spa or go work out at a place in one of those places that didn't exist when I lived there. And I think that the only way it exists is if we are actively requiring that of people as we put these projects in. This is what we want in our MCCD. And I think that in lots of ways, the developer really has checked a lot of those boxes. Um, I understand why people are concerned, but to me, this feels like this is going to be a benefit to the neighborhood. Um, and this is going to make our downtown a more like Commissioner Nae said, a more vibrant part of our city, whereas right now it's it's nothing. It's an empty lot. So um, I know that we have talked a lot about all kinds of topics on this project. Is there any further comment or discussion? If not, I will um call for a motion.
I'm willing to put a motion forward.
I'm willing.
I will. How about I'll just do it then? I would make a recommendation that the Planning Commission approved the application for design review for the proposed mixed use building located on the property addressed 184 East Vine Street, subject. To conditions one through eight as written.
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nae to approve the application for designer view for the proposed mixed use building located on the property. 184 East Vine Street, subject to the eight conditions and a second by Commissioner Hacker. And we just got on the motion. Hey, I will call for a vote.
Commissioner Nae.
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
I I just I want to say, so the public knows in the area, I I too have a little bit concerns about the height. I completely understand the process and where we are. Yes.
Commissioner Lowry.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And Commissioner or Commissioner Pearson?
I just want to clarify too that I think there's going to be some some parking issues, but I think we need to address that in code, so mine's a yes.
And lastly, Chair Patterson.
Yes. Motion passes for the design review, and we look forward to the next steps of this project. Um, all right, we will move on to. Agenda item number six. Um, Depot Commercial requesting a subdivision amendment in Woodward Industrial Park combining lots one and two. Is the applicant with us? Okay, we'll have a presentation by Mr. Hall.
I'll I'll be doing that. I'm gonna try to put myself back in this mode. I was really into the previous one, sorry. So I'm just gonna share my screen if I can. Item number six, as you said, this is Clint Tolman's. Request to consolidate lots one and two in the Woodward Industrial Park. Are you all seeing that okay? Great. So 248 and 232 West 4860 South. You might remember these two properties from the previous planning commission of two weeks ago when we had a temporary mobile office. Approved for the conditional use permit on this property. This is a site that's going to be developed as an office building, it's kind of an industrial office building where the applicants. Will have their business located and have tenant space for others. We do not build buildings in Murray over property lines, so we have asked them to combine these two parcels. In order to to finish developing the property, the site has been approved and the building has been has been approved. Those were staff level issues. But we do need a planning commission approval to combine these two lots because it amends an existing subdivision, the Woodward subdivision. With that in mind, this is in the mixed use zone, although that doesn't really have a lot of impact on the the combination of the two lots. You can see this is the amended plat that's been prepared. The next slide kind of zooms in on it. This is just for reference Commerce Drive and then 4860 South. The next slide here shows you in more detail that this basically what happens is the two lots are combined into lot 1A of the subdivision as opposed to lots one and two. And this easement that has existed previously is removed by the recording of that subdivision, and they effectively become one lot that's developable. It's been reviewed by planning, fire, engineering staff. Everyone agrees that it it doesn't cause any problems. And we are recommending that the planning commission approve that requested amended plat amendment with these six conditions. You have any questions for staff?
No questions. Maybe it's kind of straightforward. Um, okay. Yeah. Um, if the applicant is present, could they raise their hand?
There's Clint.
How's it going, everyone?
Great. Thanks for being with us. Would you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Clint Tolman. I am at 197 West 4860 South in Murray.
Great. Thank you. And have you had an a chance to review the six conditions?
Yep.
You'll be able to comply?
Yep.
Wonderful. Is there anything else you would like to add to that presentation?
No, I mean, this one's hopefully pretty easy and straightforward. So I enjoyed listening to the last one, though, the fun of being a developer.
Yes, entertaining, definitely. All right.
This one, we hopefully have enough parking, so I think we're good.
Okay, all right. Um, I would like to open this meeting for public comment regarding this agenda item. If there's anyone who would like to comment on this, you may do so by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Or if you are participating in the meeting through the webinar, you can raise your and you would like to make a live comment, please raise your hand. If you are making a live comment, we ask that you keep your comment to three minutes. And if you have submitted an email comment previous to the meeting, it will be now read into the record, and we ask you to not make any additional live comments. And did you receive any emails?
I believe we did, Zach. Is that correct?
No, we didn't receive anything on this one.
All right, and um, is there anyone raising their hand to speak to this item?
No, we only have two applicants.
Or everyone out.
Yeah.
Them out, yep. All right. Well, um. I think I'll go to public comment period then, and if there's discussion on this item or entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the. After you, go for it. I'll second you.
All right, Madam Chairman, I make motion the planning commission approved the requested Woodward Industrial Subdivision. Third Amendment plat for lots one and two, properties addressed at 248 and 232 West. 4860 South, subject to conditions one through six.
I second.
Okay, great.
I would love to second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner. Great, thank you. Um, I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker to approve the requested Woodward Industrial Subdivision. Third Amendment pot for lots one and two, properties addressed at 248 and 232 West 4860 South, subject to the six conditions with a second by Commissioner Lowry. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nae?
Yeah.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
And Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Um, congratulations and good luck with your project.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks for being here. Okay. Um, last agenda item number seven, our subdivision review for. Muriel, is that who is it? Espill, Porter Real Estate requesting an adjustment of property lines and consolidation for Crown Point PUD subdivision. And located at 5686 South Crown Point Drive, 404 East, 5600 South and 5757 South McMillan Circle. Is the applicant with us?
Yes, she is.
Great. Okay, we'll have our presentation.
Right. Thank you. So this is a similar application with its own kind of different twists involving a few properties. But again, a subdivision amendment in order to make some lot combinations by adjusting lot lines. With the addresses that you can see on your screen. The property most in question is the home right here. It backs up to this multifamily apartment complex. It's actually was a senior senior apartments. It's been been converted now or being converted. For just regular apartments, really kind of an interesting layout if you ever get a chance to walk through that building. But then this particular home has lot combinations with some of these properties here and lot line adjustments as a portion of that as well. The zoning. Sorry, is RM 15. For all properties involved. The this is from this slide is from a survey that was done in order to prepare the plats, and I think it's it's instructive to how this all kind of worked. When Crown Point PUD subdivision was put in place, the the boundary was established with a with a fence, and it was apparently placed incorrectly. And Lot 20, over the years, placed a pool on land that was not really part of that subdivision or in that lot. You can see it pretty well in these two slides. This is the original. From the original subdivision right here, it was in your reports. You can see that shape right here. In what we're and this is the area that has been kind of assumed by that lot over time. What happened then is that the owner of this lot has worked out with the other adjoining property owners to adjust property lines and assume these properties that have kind of become part of that. Lot over the years. So you end up with this lot being created as an amendment to the Crown Point PUD subdivision. And also involving some lot line adjustments here, and then the combination of of these lots from these other areas into lot. 20, which becomes Lot 20A in the amendment. So it looks really complicated when you're looking at the line work, but the the real deal is is basically pretty simple. We have looked at it, and this is just an enlargement of that, so you can see that kind of area that existed before. Again, this is an easement that was created when that original subdivision was put in place. That will go away with this amendment. And be replaced by another easement. But we are, we have looked at it with engineering staff, fire staff, planning and zoning. It doesn't create any problems for any of the other lots. I know in our. In our pre-meeting discussion, we wondered about the the lot area of the multifamily. Structure next door that still maintains its area that it's required to have for its number of units. And this this lot obviously is getting larger and still conforming to its its requirements in the PUD. So with these four, with these four. Conditions, we are recommending approval of the amended subdivision. Any questions for staff? My items feel a lot easier than Zach's items. I feel guilty, and they weren't even my items. They were Susan's. Susan's did all the work on them.
Yeah, tonight you got it easy. All right.
Super easy lately.
Is the applicant, if they would raise their hand and state their name and address for the record?
Hello? Can you hear me? Sorry, I'm I don't know how to use all this stuff. My name is Muriel Espill, and my address is 5686 South Crown Point Drive in Murray 84107. I appreciate you looking at my situation tonight. I have to say that it's been very upsetting for me to I've lived here almost 19 years. And to just have found out last May that I didn't really own all my property. So so. I have been trying since then. To get all of this resolved and. Oh, and by the way, I didn't put the pool in. The pool was here when I moved in, so I don't know how that ever happened. But nothing has changed since I have lived here. No fences have been moved or adjusted or anything, so. It is what it has always been, but I'd really like it to all be mine. So. Hope that you can help me.
That is understandable. What a funny situation. Well, have you had a chance to review the four conditions?
No, in fact, I when you were talking about conditions with the other, I couldn't find them, so please tell me where they are.
They are in your packet, but I think we have them maybe on the screen.
Let me put them up on screen here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so and I'll just read them. I'll just read them through for you, Ms. Espill.
Oh, the recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, just the conditions that are attached to the recommendation. If we can meet those engineering standards, and you you've basically already.
Well, yes, I think we already have met all of those, haven't we?
You have. We just we like to have them be part of the commission's approval so that it's very, these things have to, they have to stay maintained, so.
And I agree with that. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. That's wonderful. Okay, and we will now open this. This. The public meeting or the public comment portion of this meeting for this agenda item. If there's anyone that would like to make a comment on this item, you can do so by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Or if you would like to make, you're participating through the Zoom webinar, you would like to make a live comment, you can click Raise Your Hand. If you are making a live comment, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes, and if you have submitted an email comment previous to the meeting, it will not be read into the record, and we ask you to not make any additional live comments. And have you received any emails or comments for this agenda item?
Yeah, we did receive one email, and I'll go ahead and read that. This is from Lenore Lilly White. She states, I live at 430 East Crown Point Drive and would like to give my support to the proposed adjustments for Muriel's property, which will be discussed February 18. We lived in the subdivision before the homes were built on that west side, and all the original buyers on that side extended their property lines. With their own fences because the property behind them was not occupied, and I assume they wanted larger backyards. As I recall, at the time, the large piece of property had an older yellow house, which was empty, and there was no one to tell them not to. Muriel is a later owner. The house already had a pool on it. I don't know if on buying the property, she was even told that the original owners had done that. She tried to get this property line problem fixed years ago. I hope you will go ahead and allow for the adjustment on her property. Thank you, Lenore Lilly White.
Oh, thank you, Lenore.
That is my favorite public comment of all time. Because it is so clear eyed about everything that went on. It's exactly how things happen.
That's true. Okay. Um, any additional comments come in? Okay, I am going to close the public comment portion, and. I'll bring it back to the commission for either further discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. And I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approved the requested Crown Point PUD subdivision two amendment for lot number 20. 5686 South Crown Point Drive and properties addressed 404 East. 5600 South and 5757 South McMillan Circle, subject to conditions one through four.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve the requested Crown Point PUD subdivision. Two amendment for lot number 20, 5686 South Crown Point Drive and properties addressed 404 East, 5600 South and 5757 South McMillan Circle. Subject to the four conditions with a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call for a vote then.
Hey, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Nae?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
And Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yay. Thank you very much. I'm I'm so happy. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. All right.
But I really do appreciate all your help. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business for the planning commission?
Not not too much, just a reminder that it's going to be a busy spring as we. Move through the moratorium and try to get things prepared for you guys to review. To make recommendations to council about potential changes for mixed use zoning and things like that. A lot of those same kind of issues that came up tonight will be very instructive for how we want to how we want to move forward, and they've they've been, you know, part of our thought process for a while now. So looking forward to that. We are monitoring a lot of things at the legislature, and we'll try to give you updates when we meet again about any potential change. about any potential changes, and, um, land use training needs to happen sometime this spring, and we're struggling to find a a week to do that, but we will, we will figure that out too, so. Yeah.
Uh, I was gonna say, do you wanna let them know, but since I'm talking, I'll just do it. The RC Willie Boyer Company has withdrawn their application, and then, um, so has Howland Properties. So, um, we will-
Do you mind us which one the Howland property is? Is that the sports mall?
The State Street and 53rd. So, we'll, we'll be working fast and furious over the next few months to try and come up with some solutions for um, mixed-use options in those areas.
Perfect. And, and then I was just gonna, one, one last thing, so you, so you're aware that the item eight was withdrawn from the Agenda Eight and Nine about the William Street. Um, the, the developer in that, in that application is Mike Brodsky, Hamlet Development. He has been working with Dale Cox, the, the councilman from the area, to put together a neighborhood meeting instead of coming to the planning commission to try to address and talk to the neighborhood about why he wants to do what he wants to do and explain his reasons for asking for what he's asking for, so that it doesn't create such a, um, a burden and drama at the planning commission, potentially. It may be that nothing gets worked out. We'll see what happens, but they're gonna have a neighborhood meeting, I think on the twenty-third of February. Yeah.
I, I got the, the information on that.
Yeah.
If, if you wanna be included in that Zoom meeting, you can email Haley, H-A-Y-L-E-Y, at hamletdevelopment.com, and it's D-E-V, it's shortened, D-E-V dot com. And, and just address the neighborhood meeting on February 23rd at 6:30, and she would email you back with the link to that Zoom meeting.
Can I recommend, though, guys, that you, that you're not? It's a neighborhood meeting, and if you're all involved, it becomes a planning commission meeting, and the, the point of it being a neighborhood meeting is that, that there shouldn't be a decision made there, and, and there should be the, 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 sort of the, the appearance of there being a public facade to it. There'll be a planning commission meeting if, if Mike, when he's done with this neighborhood meeting, feels like it's worthwhile to keep coming forward, and that's when we should review, and you, you might wanna know what's going on there and everything, but to participate would probably be uh, not, not advisable.
So I, so I can't listen in?
Uh, I don't know about listening in. Listening in, probably fine. I don't know if they're gonna broadcast it in a way that you could listen in without being on. The danger would be if you're, if you're there as commissioners and, and they're, and they get to where they wanna ask you questions, well, how would you guys wanna do this, et cetera? It's just a bad-
Okay.
You'll have your moment to review it. You'll have your moment to talk about the, the, the meeting, and there'll be all kinds of information about what happened at the neighborhood meeting. But we're, we're, for example, sta-, we're not gonna staff that meeting. That would be like Zach and Melinda and I, we won't be involved in that. Ned, or, sorry, I was looking at Ned when I said Ned. Mike, Mike Brodsky is setting that up. Um, and probably the only public person that should really be involved, and that would be Dale Cox as the councilman who's helping him set it up.
Okay, I just, I, I live so close to that spot that I-
It's, it's hard, I know, to not be involved when it's, it's literally your neighborhood. It's really tough, but-
Yeah, okay.
I think you shouldn't probably be involved. Zach, you had your-
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I just want to make, to kind of piggyback on that. I think, Jared, if, if I'm not mistaken, if Sue and Dale were there, that's a public meeting, right?
Um, you'd have to ask a lawyer, but yeah, I would advise that the planning commission specifically not be there.
Okay, I, I won't do it then. I'll just wait to hear from you.
Okay. And I don't have anything else, and I'm out of Diet Mountain Dew, so at this point, I have nothing else to say unless you have questions.
I just am, I, I'm happy to hear that, um, Mike Brodsky's doing that. I like, I appreciate when they are willing to meet with the, the neighborhood before they kind of plan their development, so I think that that's a really good move. And I just wanna thank all of the other commissioners for the great meeting tonight. Thank you for all of your discussion. Like you guys, that really, really was very well done. So yeah, Zach, round of applause. Good job.
Well, good job, man.
Thanks. Uh, we can have a motion to adjourn.
Okay, 8:58, motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for remembering the time.
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good job, Jared.